Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Monday, September the 19th, 2022 Business Meeting. I will welcome the viewing audience that's joining us livestream and those that are here with us in person. I will call the meeting to order and ask all that are here to please stand for the presentation of colors.
Presenting tonight's colors are members of the J.M. Robinson High School Air Force JROTC program, and their personnel includes Cadet Captain Caleb Karosi, Second Lieutenant Sarah Henson, Cadet Second Lieutenant Hannah Apel, and Cadet Master Sergeant Ajahnay Stewart.
Come on. Hold. Where is it? Colors. Carried. Colors. Post. Post. Right. Ace. Forward. Arch.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our National Anthem were members of the Hickory Ridge High School Saxophone Quartet, and their personnel included Matthew Sterns, Everest Geist, Nathan Brazeez, and Max Pesch. The Director of the Hickory Ridge High School Saxophone Quartet is Mr. David Rivera. Thank you.
Okay, Board Members, we are going to move to 3.01, and I would ask that we, I have a motion that we amend the agenda. We need to move the 9.01, the Beginning Teachers of the Year, to Recognitions and make it 4.04. May I have a motion for that change, please?
Same here.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we will begin with our Recognitions, 4.01, our Impact Through Education Awards, and we'll ask Mr. Phil Furr to the podium, please, who's joining us for the first time for Recognitions.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, members of the Board. Tonight, we'll present the first set of Impact Through Education Awards for the 22-23 Academic Year to students and staff at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representatives Adrian Caspar and Emily Satterly to join us at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for his continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we begin the 13th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to the Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. We'll begin with Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. May I have the Beverly Hills Administrative Team come forward? Our first honoree from Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School is Abram Whitaker. Abram, please come forward with your family. Abram is a fifth grader at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School, and he has been at Beverly Hills since his kindergarten year. Abram is a true Beverly Hills Bulldog, showing respect, responsibility, and safety in all parts of his life. His kindness, helpfulness, and example make our school a brighter place. Abram is a great role model for his peers, and he is known as a friend to everyone. He puts great time and effort into all of his assignments, no matter how big or small the task. Abram excels not only academically, but in athletics as well. Regardless of the situation, Abram can be counted on to do his best. Abram has set high expectations for himself and others, and encourages everyone to do their best at all times. He is thoughtful, generous, and compassionate with classmates and adults. We are thankful for his leadership and proud of the way he demonstrates to our younger students what it means to be a Beverly Hills Bulldog. Congratulations, Abram. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Beverly Hills. Our next honoree from Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School is Maria Adame. Maria, please come forward with your family. Maria's not with us tonight. Maria is a fifth grader at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School, and she has been at Beverly Hills since her kindergarten year. Maria is the epitome of kindness. She is quick to help, always brings a smile, and spreads kindness everywhere she goes. Maria always has a fantastic attitude, and she's always willing to help a teacher, a student, and at times, she even translates for students who speak Spanish to help them understand and be successful. Maria is eager to learn and always stays on top of her work. Her strong work ethic has helped to make her an amazing growth every year. Maria is sensitive to the needs of others. She works hard whether independently or in a team setting, and she's respectful of others whether she knows them or not. Over the years, Maria has been recognized for her fantastic attitude and propensity towards leadership. She has formed strong bonds with her teachers over the years, and we are all proud of the great example she shows of what it means to be a Beverly Hills Bulldog. Congratulations, Maria. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. Also from Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School is Staff Member Ms. Patty Knox. Ms. Knox, please come forward with your family. Anyone who knows Ms. Knox knows she always has a smile on her face and is willing to lend a helping hand to students and staff members. She is perhaps the most adaptable member of the Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School family. You will never hear Ms. Knox say things like, "I can't do that," or "It's impossible," "It'll never work." What were they thinking? She's the most solution-oriented person you will ever meet. She will not rest until she finds a way to meet the needs of every student with whom she comes in contact. We all know our District Teacher of the Year, Ms. Angie McLean, but what you might not know is how closely Ms. McLean and Ms. Knox work together on a daily basis to change outcomes for students. In the words of our very own Ms. McLean, "Working with Ms. Knox is like having an additional teacher in the room. She is more than an assistant, she is an educator." Much of the growth that has been seen by the McLean gang from year to year is partially attributed to Ms. Knox. Not only is she Beverly Hills Teacher's Assistant of the Year, but she is also part of the reason that I am the Hendrick Autumnall Concord Mills Teacher of the Year. We are so thankful for Ms. Knox and her consistent demonstrations of what it means to be a Beverly Hills Bulldog, for both our students and staff members. Congratulations, Patty. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. And finally, from Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School is Teacher Cory Cobble. Ms. Cobble, please come forward with your family. What a joy it is to teach with and learn from Ms. Cobble. She is kind, compassionate, and a wealth of knowledge. Our media coordinator, who co-teaches with Ms. Cobble on a regular basis, says there are often times when I find myself getting caught up learning from her. She doesn't go halfway on anything. I mean, have you seen all of her dress-ups and costumes for every event and occasion? It is true. Ms. Cobble exudes school spirit, and her passion for learning is contagious. Her love for what she does is evident to all, especially our students. Ms. Cobble is also a great support and encourager to all those around her, whether students or colleagues. Her ability to inspire, wonder, and awaken curiosity in students and staff members is second to none. What an example she sets of what it means to be a Beverly Hills Bulldog for our staff members and our students. It is truly a privilege to get to work with her. Congratulations, Cory. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Beverly Hills STEM Elementary School. Thanks to interview. We will now continue with our September Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. May I have the Northwest Cabarrus Administrative Team come forward? Our first honoree from Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School is Jordan Wiggins. Jordan, please come forward with your family. Jordan Wiggins is one of the most caring, loving, and hardest-working students you will find. He goes above and beyond in everything he does. Jordan shows respect to everyone he meets and strives to help others be the best they can be. Jordan has one of the sweetest souls and is an absolute treasure to have in the classroom. Jordan is a lifelong learner, always seeking answers and finding ways to better himself. He truly inspires everyone he meets. As one Northwest Cabarrus Middle School staff member stated, "One day, I hope to grow up to be just like Jordan." Congratulations, Jordan, for making an impact at Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner. Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School is Zaria York. Zaria, please come forward with your family. Zaria York is an eighth-grade student at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She is a leader inside the classroom, in the community, and on the track. Zaria has served as one of our student leaders, who is always willing to stand up for what is right. Her enthusiasm for learning and charisma is contagious. For the past two years, Zaria has not only served as a school leader, but also served as a leader at the Boys and Girls Club. She is a well-rounded student, and her integrity is second to none. Zaria strives to make the world a better place, and she encompasses what it means to be tight and strong. Congratulations, Zaria. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner at Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Next, from Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School is Staff Member Marlene Peeler. Ms. Peeler, please come forward with your family. Marlene Peeler is the Teacher Assistant in our self-contained Impact Classroom. Ms. Peeler consistently goes above and beyond to ensure her students' needs are met. She is the biggest advocate for her students, always being there for them when they need her the most. When the need arose, Ms. Peeler did not hesitate to step up to support her students, both academically and behaviorally, to ensure they had the consistency and structure in the classroom to be successful. She meets with each student one-on-one daily, as she knows the importance of building strong relationships with her students, and knows the impact of what one positive conversation can do for a student. Ms. Peeler works to ensure her students know how much they are loved while ensuring they are being challenged academically. You will never hear a complaint come from Ms. Peeler, and you will never see her without a smile on her face. Ms. Peeler has been a ray of sunshine in the lives of so many students and staff. Congratulations, Marlene, for making an impact at Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner. And finally tonight, from Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School is Teacher Amanda Andrews. Ms. Andrews, please come forward with your family. Amanda Andrews serves as the multi-tiered Systems of Support Coach at Northwest Cabarrus STEM Middle School. Ms. Andrews dedicates herself to supporting the needs of our students and staff. One NCMS staff member stated that Ms. Andrews is an essential element who works to build a positive environment for our students and staff. She works tirelessly to provide students an opportunity to develop and grow. Ms. Andrews is a resource for our parents and works to collaborate with parents and staff to find creative ways to improve student progress. She facilitates conversations between core teachers, encore teachers, and organizes honor roll recognitions, school incentives, and takes the lead on projects being implemented across the school. Ms. Andrews pours her heart and soul into the students at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, always positive and always supportive. As one Northwest Cabarrus Middle School staff member stated, "Ms. Andrews has helped me to become a better educator in person. Her positive attitude and dedication set her apart from everyone else." Congratulations, Amanda. You've made an impact at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, and you're an Impact Through Education Award winner. This concludes our Impact Award presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. We will move to 4.02, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we will ask Dr. Marion Bish to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Kapicki, our viewing audiences, both here and those on livestream. It's my pleasure to introduce you to our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for September. We always want to begin by expressing our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and that they continue to sponsor this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for September is Suzanne Jones, a CTE teacher at Concord High School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Jones, her family, and any members of the school's administrative team to come forward. Dr. Kapicki will present Ms. Jones with her award, but first, we want to share the nomination that was submitted by students about Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones is one of the greatest teachers I've met in all 13 years of being in school. She definitely shows what it means to be a teacher. She was always there for me, even if it didn't have anything to do with school. It could be work or home life, and she always provided the best advice she could. She represents the true definition of greatness with her going above and beyond to make sure her students are taken care of in and out of school. She's also a co-partner in the club FCC LA at Concord High School. In this program, she started different community service projects to support families in need and our local homeless population, not only in North Carolina, but all over the world. She has definitely shaped me into the woman I am today and helped me achieve my goals. I hope that you recognize her for the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and so we are. Ms. Jones, thank you for the impact you're making for teaching and engaging the students in your classroom and those you reach through your selfless dedication to community service. We congratulate you on your selection as the Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for September. Dr. Kapicki has your certificate and your check.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bish. Next, we will move to 4.03, the Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award, and we'll ask Mr. John Legrand and Art Whitaker to the podium, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Dr. Kapicki, I'd like to call Mr. Virgil Powell. Forward to be recognized, with him today also is Art Whitaker, Cabarrus County School Transportation Department Director. This evening, and family, I'm sorry, Mr. Powell. This evening, I'm proud to present this month's Great Wolf Lodge Everyday Hero Award. This award is presented monthly to an employee within our Auxiliary Services Department, which includes our Kids Plus, Facilities Maintenance, Construction, Student Nutrition, and Transportation Departments. This award is intended to recognize the outstanding behind-the-scenes work that's done each and every day that often goes unnoticed, but tonight will be publicly recognized. In addition to our public recognition here at the Board Meeting, sorry, we are very grateful for our partners at Great Wolf Lodge that have generously provided complimentary water park passes for four to each month's recipient of our Everyday Hero Award, including Mr. Powell. So with us tonight is this month's recipient of the Everyday Hero Award, Mr. Virgil Powell. Mr. Powell is a lead bus driver and was nominated by our Transportation HR Specialist, Ms. April Cobble. Ms. Cobble had this to say about Mr. Powell. "Mr. Powell is a lead driver for the West Cabarrus area and has worked with Cabarrus County Schools for almost eight years. Simply put, Virgil is a constant breath of fresh air. He is my biggest recruiter for hiring drivers, a mentor and a trainer to many of our new drivers, and a cheerleader for our current drivers. Anytime Virgil's in the office, he brings with him a smile, an upbeat attitude, and positivity that is contagious. He is complimentary to his fellow drivers, always spreading a positive and sharing praise." Positivity and sharing praise. "He enthusiastically supports the department Facebook page and has personally organized his team to get together for photos and driver spotlights. Virgil is the type of person you want to be around and you want to work with. He genuinely cares about his students, his job, and especially his fellow colleagues. We need and value people like Virgil Powell on our team." I would like to thank Ms. Cobble for submitting that nomination, and I would personally like to say to you, Mr. Powell, well done, and congratulations on being an everyday hero.
Okay, Board Members, we have made 9.01, 4.04, which is our 2022-2023 Beginning Teacher of the Year. of the Year, and we'll ask Dr. Marion Bish back to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we would like to recognize, first of all, the Beginning Teacher of the Year program. This is a program that honors the contributions of first-year teachers. It is sponsored by the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, many of us know it as NCAT, and the purpose of it is to honor these beginning teachers and retain these excellent educators. We also want to encourage a celebration of first-year teachers. Earlier this afternoon, we had a reception and presented plaques to 21 of our beginning teachers as nominated by their school system, or their individual schools. At this time, we would like to invite Ms. Natalia Mahaya, her family, and any school administrator here this evening to come forward. A special congratulations goes to Natalia Mahaya. She is a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade ESL teacher at CC Griffin STEM Middle School. She has been selected as the 2022-23 Cabarrus County Schools' Beginning Teacher of the Year. Ms. Mahaya was surprised at her school with the announcement by Dr. Kapiky on September 7th. She is a graduate of UNC Charlotte, and we have a representative of the university here that was one of her instructors, we are thrilled to have them. She is a graduate of UNC Charlotte with a bachelor's degree of arts in elementary education with a double minor in teaching English as a second language and reading K-12. Ms. Mahaya is currently pursuing a master's degree in Latin American Studies at UNC Charlotte. Some of her outstanding accomplishments, and I do say some, include memberships in Phi Kappa Phi Honor Society, Kappa Delta Pi International Honor Society in Education, Honors in Education, TEDx Craver, Road Speaker, and co-author for multiple educational publications, including Language Teachers Studying Abroad: Identities, Emotions, and Disruptions. Ms. Mahaya joined Cabarrus County Schools as a beginning teacher in August of 2021. Recognizing the need for bilingual multicultural representation in her classroom sparked Natalia's desire to become an ESL teacher. Her instructional philosophy emphasizes the necessity and the rewards of building strong relationships between her school and the Latino community. In the words of Principal Yolanda Blakeney, "Ms. Mahaya has been a wonderful addition to the CCG family. She has gone above and beyond to make sure that her ESL students receive an equitable and quality education. She takes the time to help her students with organization, social, and life skills that have provided them with additional skills and strategies to excel in their core classrooms." Congratulations Natalia. We are proud to call you Cabarrus County Schools' Beginning Teacher of the Year.
Okay, congratulations to all of our recipients tonight on behalf of the board, and we will now move to 5.01, which is the approval of the minutes. Board members, may I have a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for August 1st, 2022, August 8th, 2022, and August 22nd, 2022? Are there any noted comments or corrections? So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will move now to 6.01, which is our board chair comments, and in order not to spoil the surprise, we have not placed this on the agenda, but I'll ask Ms. Carpenter to join me at the podium, please. So Board Member Carolyn Carpenter is being presented the Clyde L. Probst Jr. Memorial Award, given by the Cabarrus County Fair Board, presented to Ms. Carolyn Carpenter for her outstanding service for 2021. And at this time, I will ask the board to recognize her for this great service award. Okay, congratulations, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you.
And we will continue with board chair comments, and at this time, I will ask Mr. White if he will step to the podium. We are going to discuss Policy 3211. I wanted to make the statement that in an effort to be as transparent as we possibly could be, I think we've caused a little bit of a storm regarding the policy. So just for the viewing audience and for those that are here, just so we make it really clear, that out of the conversation that we were having last week, it was really clear that the process is the problem that we have going on, not so much the policy. So in that discussion with the board attorney, it was stated that we needed to look at, you know, maybe either tweaking or modifying the existing policies or actually creating a different policy that addressed board members having the ability to be able to authorize Dr. Kapiky for his staff to review or pull for review books or materials that needed to be reviewed. The problem being that got us there is when we have a complaint or a challenge or someone that's questioning pulling or reviewing a book, the existing policy states that that has to come from a parent at the existing school of which the book or the material is at. Well, this particular book that was being looked at, the person who was asking for that to be pulled for review did not qualify and did not meet that criteria. So we understood and in conversation know that that should not stop there, you know, that it's still very valid question, you know, for the board to look at materials that are being questioned. If our process is not working, our board works off of policy procedures and process. If that does not affirm each other, then that's our job to fix it, and that's really where we are, that's how the conversation began, and we asked Mr. White to start the draft of another policy that would get us there during the time that this is going to be placed back to the literacy committee for a recommendation on how to fix the process that will actually meet the criteria of the policy. And from that, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Dr. Kapiky, what I did draft was Policy Code 3211, and I think that's on board docs, if I'm not mistaken. The essence of 3211 is that if the board wanted to reconsider a book or reconsider media collection material, and I'm old-school, so if I say media collection, if I say library, I meant media collection, no offense. If I say book, I'm meaning the media collection material. So I will try and use the right lumenclature of today. I just always went to the library, I didn't go to a media center. So, plus, we didn't have the internet when I was coming along. So with that to be said, is that it was my understanding that if there was a concern of a book or a media collection material, then what was the board do? If the board wanted to act to look at it or reconsider it, as opposed to somebody, a student, or excuse me, a parent that wanted to select or wanted to be reconsidered. We didn't have it in the policy for essence for the board to actually look at it the way I was reading the policy, so I created 3211. There is nothing set in stone on 3211 that I drafted there, so it's to y'all's hearts' desire and y'all's discussion as to what y'all think needs to be done, what needs to be edited or needs to be looked at. Seeing that it is a policy that is always something to look at, I then started thinking, and I spoke to Madam Chair today, about what it would look like if, instead of the board questioning, the board reviewing, and the board deciding, would it be, would it not be better for if the board is concerned about a book, excuse me, a media collection material, instead of the board reviewing it, if it goes to a reconsideration committee comprised of educators that have been hired by the system to look at it and look at it from that perspective, make the decision or determination there, and if, you know, depending on what that decision is, it could be appealed to this board for this board to then look at it, to have the final say. Does that make sense? So I then drafted what I say is the redline edits that I have printed, because I didn't get it finished until this afternoon. I did send it over to Mrs. Hammond, so if that needs to be put up, that can be put up. But the idea is, what you have before you as a redline edit is the concept of this board challenging or asking for reconsideration, but a reconsideration committee review that material. So the idea would be, y'all are questioning the book or concerned about the book, then we'd go to the reconsideration committee, and that committee would review, discuss, and determine whether, one, it should be removed from current circulation, two, whether it should be retained in the current circulation, or three, whether it should be moved to a parental approval section of the library for parental approval, so it would not be removed, but it would go into another section of the library. That would be the decision that that board, that committee would make to be done. So then I started, then in thinking it through, is if this book is in multiple schools, excuse me, media collection materials in multiple schools, then the question is, what, the redline version is that a person from each school would be selected as a member of this committee, a parent would be selected as a member of this committee, an educator, a teacher in that area, so if it's, you don't want, well, I would not think you'd want a physics teacher reading an English book, talking about an, you know, that would be, could be, but somebody that's actually working in that area with more expertise maybe in that area to discuss the book, and a librarian, or excuse me, a media collection, media center.
How about media specialist?
Media specialist.
And will you please key your mic up? I took your.
Sorry, I thought it was. Media specialist. Now, so the idea is, and I did put in there, that if possible, that reconsideration committee should be no more than seven. I just pulled that number out of the hat because, one, it's odd, it's an odd number, so that it would be a majority vote, two, is that I believe if a book is going to be reconsidered, the educators, the experience that I know this board thrives on and supports, it could be developed within those seven. If it needs to be bigger, it can be bigger, and then what I suggested in the redline version is that the principal that is selected would be the chair of that reconsideration committee to start the conversation. These are all thoughts and ideas for y'all to look at. You can tell me, you know, we don't like any of it and needs to go back to the drawing board, I get that, I just need to get, I'm just putting what I believe your thoughts may be in the redline version, if you wanted to go back to a reconsideration committee instead of y'all making that determination. So that the thought process, and also, I put in timeframes, so that with the idea that a decision made by that committee, the reconsideration committee, could be done promptly and quickly, depending on the volume of the material to be reviewed, and then also, that from the feedback of the community that I've heard at some meetings, is that if a book is going to be reconsidered, that it automatically get posted to our website, that if the book is going to be removed, it gets posted to the website, and the decision, whatever the decision be made, is posted to the website. Those concepts, posting everything to the website, Mrs. Blackwell, in her vision, was going to discuss that tomorrow night with the literature committee to see exactly what that would look like, but in her vision, it would be that on the website, there would actually be something easy to find, it would be under, I think, board committees, under literature committee, and everything would be right there, so it would be a quick way to look at it and to review it. But what I tried to do is put in, to encapsulate what I believe this board has always strived to do, is the idea of books to be consistent with the goals and the educational goals of this board, of the system, and also relying on the educators that we have in the system to discuss, to debate, and to come up with a decision as to whether that material should stay on the library shelves, curriculum, excuse me, in circulation, should that material be removed, or should that material be moved into a parental section, and then have a discussion as to why. I think I've covered everything.
So these are recommendations from the board attorney to cover as much of this conversation that we had started initially having. It was never, as we all know, the intent of this board to be the one who made the complaint, reviewed the book, made the decision, and made sure that it was enforced. That just would not have taken place, we would have not created the committee if that had been the case. You know, this is the process that we wanted to absolutely take our time to make sure it's vetted correctly, because what we found, and I'm going to let Dr. Kapiky speak to this, is for six years, there has been no review, there has been no books that have been vetted, there's not been a process. The review committees have not been in place, they, you know, there just wasn't a good process for the system of what we need to have in order to get these taken care of. So, Dr. Kapiky, I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, so Chairman Grimsley, what you said is accurate to the best of my knowledge. Upon reviewing discussion with some of our administration and our curriculum instruction folks, in the last six years, there has been, there have been no books that have been reviewed, and the process that is or isn't in place is not working. So it's not, it's not a process that we've implemented over the last six years, because to be honest with you, quite frankly, there is no process for review that is in place for us to use.
Thank you. So the board just needs to have a discussion, and I know this is not a lot of time, but it truly is just red-lighting the verbiage that really wasn't quite where the board was intended and got just a little bit skewed. Or we can place this with Ms. Blackwell's committee for tomorrow night, there's three of you that sit on that committee for the discussion, with a very large committee of others that will have input. We can send it back to the policy committee, there's several different things that we can do from this point. We can amend the agenda to approve it or to approve it to come back to us on a first read. There's several things that we can do, and I just want to begin the discussion, and I will start with Ms. Sandage.
Can you come back to me? This is a lot of reading to do, so please come back to me.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, it's also kind of first time I've seen it, too. My first look at it is, why are we taking power from our superintendent when it's really his job to do all this stuff? And the other policies that we are reviewing could be modified to incorporate some of these things, but.
May I speak to that? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, one is, if this board, if something is raised to this board that is concerning to the board, a book, and that's what we're talking about, is a book, then the question is, what do you do about it? And that's where it goes to the reconsideration committee. The process, this process can be. The process, this process can be pulled into 3210, okay? But, but knowing that 3210, it can be done that way, and I think that would be cleaner, it would be in one place. I didn't want to mess with 3210.
Well, we're already messing with 3210.
And what I'm talking about is giving you five pages or six pages on top of this. That's, that's my point. So yes, it can go into 3210. It can be, it can be outlined in 3210.
Yeah, I would, my, my preference would be to say.
That's fine.
Change 3210 to inspection and objection of instructional materials and go that way.
That's fine, I can do that. I just didn't, again, I didn't know what the board's pleasure was.
Yeah, I'm just one of the board members. Thanks, I'm still reading through this.
Mr. Farr?
Yes, I agree with, you know, with the others that we're going to have to take a little bit of time to read it, but, but I'm in favor of the process, creating the process that works and that's transparent, and we can get to the bottom of it. I mean, bottom line is whatever we do, we're going to have to continue or stay focused on getting. I think what maybe we're maybe overlooking is, I don't know of anyone really that, well, what was read last week is going to be in our schools. I think, I think the whole board agrees with that. But, so I know there's some marginal things, some marginal books probably, that it's a good idea to have that committee to take a look at it before there's a decision.
Ms. Blackwell, and before I even let you speak, I want to make sure now, Mr. White sent out, before that was on board docs, that first version, which I know this is red line, but I want to make sure that everybody received that and did view it, okay, before you got here? Okay, so the first version, everybody's familiar, okay. Ms. Blackwell?
So I'll just say thank you to Mr. White for, for drafting this. This was in an effort of a concern of process, and to Chairman Grimsley's point, we did not have a process that was working. The Literature and Supplemental Material Committee has worked extremely hard to try and vet policies 3200 and 3210, but what we realized is that there are some gaps and there are some pieces missing, and when books are brought to us as board, we need to have a, a solid place and, and process in order to get those books looked at. And that's what this policy was drafted to do, if that means that we embed this into 3210, or if we keep it as a separate policy, either way. I, I think tomorrow night, speaking with my committee, we will get some solid answers to this as well to help bridge some of those gaps, but definitely necessary conversation. And I think people need to understand that, you know, the reason that we do this and bring these up in these meetings is because we are required to have these conversations in public. This is what we have to do, and so even though we may throw, you know, put a, a policy out there, we're not going to be just approving it willy-nilly without discussion, but we do have to put it out there so people understand that we are going to be having discussion on these policies in these meetings moving forward.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you. One of the things I did review, the first 3211, and was not real happy with that, so I was glad to see when the red line come through, but I would really like to see it worked into 3210. I think it makes it a lot cleaner because we've worked very hard to make the subcommittees, which I think is a lot better and more transparent, because we've got people, and I've been on the literacy committee, and they've worked very hard to get people on that committee that the librarians, the administration, and that committee are a lot more familiar with the books and with it, and it, we work very, very hard to make those subcommittees more trans, we use that word transparency, transparency, but it, it, it really works a lot better and does what it needs to do. And we want to make sure that it does, does the job, and it, it does, and we've worked very, very hard to see that. We've still got a few holes, and the holes I want to make sure that are filled, and unfortunately, I will not be able to be at the meeting, which I've informed our chairman tomorrow night, but what the things that I want to see these policies do is to make sure if in between the meetings, before it can get to that, that we do have, if something comes up, we have a parent call or a parent email to say, hey, I found this in the schools. We need it out so the children or someone cannot put their hands on it before a meeting or before, that we can get it out to, so it can be reviewed. We want to make sure that that's in the policy, that someone can, a principal can get it out so the committee can, to make sure it's in the policy. That's one of the things I want to make sure is there. And the other thing, that we do have that there, and the other thing is that we do have it where we did before. We, our committee did it, then we send it to the big policy committee. I think that was very important because the more eyes, which we've got a lot of eyes here tonight, a lot, the more eyes that can see this, the policies, and see this, I think the better off we are. And that shows, we're trying to be transparent, but the more people that can see this and look over it, I think the better off we are. We're showing, we're trying to do the very best we can, and I think Tim said it, that taking our time and make sure we're doing it right the first time, and that's what we're trying to do. And so I think those are the things I want to make sure we are doing, and to make sure, and I've said it, that we get this stuff out, and we know some of it's here, and everybody says, well, how in the world did it get in? And I think we've looked and looked, and it wasn't intentional. I think we had a lot of bulk books that got here, and our librarians and our principals, everybody has worked so, so hard, and these things come in. And I know that our librarians, everybody's doing two or three jobs, and a lot of times they don't have time to go through all these things because they are doing it. And I just think a lot of people just did not have time to go through every, and they just slipped through the cracks. And now we're trying to fill those cracks and get it done, and our superintendent has done an excellent job. He has said, okay, everybody's going to be responsible for everything, so you better check it out now. And I think we're, we're, everybody's trying to take responsibility and making sure this does not happen. So we're getting policies in place, we're asking the right questions, so hopefully we're on the right track now. And thank everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Akka?
Yes, so thank you for giving us the red line. I have just a couple of minutes to review it, and just, I do have a question to ask.
Yes.
The reconsideration committee that's listed in here, is that separate from the other committees?
Right, and let me tell you the reason why it would be, why, why I made it separate is that if a, so in 3211, the idea is that it is a book that may be in one, two, or three schools, but not in all the others. So if it's in tho, if it's in some of the schools but not all the schools, the reconsideration committee as it relates to that book would comprise outside of one school, so it would be three schools we're dealing with. In 3210, what could be is instructional material, and the way I would under, the way I understand it, is instructional material may be unique to that school, so the committee in that school would talk about instructional material, not a book that's in the three different schools. So that's the reason why the reconsideration committee under 3211 would be different than 3210. So, yes.
And now, just another clarifying question about this committee is every time there's a book or whatever comes up, you're going to have another committee that's going to be formed?
It could be, and the reason why is, let's, so in theory, if a book is in school one, two, and three, that would be a committee that would look like, and the reason why I think it's important is school one, two, and three may have a very legitimate reason, and the importance of that book being on their shelves. If the next book that's select, or next book that is questioned is in school two, four, and five, then it would be a different committee because that book may have a different meaning to tho, to those schools, and the educational suitability to those schools, but it would also get, so that's the reason why it may change every time. Now, if y'all want to keep it the same, it can be the same. I was just thinking, if the book is not in every school, should the committee be the same? That's a board decision to make. I just, this is what I thought based upon what I thought would be fair.
Okay. I think I agree with what others have said about trying to get it incorporated into the policy 3210. I think it's important to not make this cumbersome and hard to.
Okay.
Figure out.
And we can do that, and, and talking about it, Mr. Vogel was able to show me, I think that what we can do is put it as C. I think B is about a parental objection, C could be a board concern, or whatever, we could just follow it up with C, so that could easily be put into 3211. Yes, ma'am.
So first question, how did we get a policy that was put on to board docs and then a totally different version of that? How does it get to board docs first without making sure that it's exactly what has been asked of us to put? And I guess my concern is that we've confused a lot of people for no reason. So how does that happen?
Okay, well, when I was tasked with coming up with the, a policy about what would the board look like, and how would the board review or reconsider a material, the first version is what I came up with. The more I started thinking about it, the more I started realizing that the, the idea that this board is striving to support and, and lean on the teachers and the more, the more professionals, that's when I started thinking about, well, maybe instead of the board reviewing it, it should be something that the, the educators should, should review it and discuss it from that point of view. So that was, that's on me. When I first came, when I first started thinking about it and knowing that we had to put something on board docs, I initially thought about this, but the more I thought about it and more I thought about what y'all would probably want, that's when I came up with the red line version.
Okay. Yeah, that's just real concerning to me.
Well.
And we're good. The other question that I had was in reference to, do we have a process in place right now? Because what I understand was we were trying to create a process because there wasn't one, or the one that's there isn't being used. So can you clarify, are we good with where we are right now as it relates to if there is an issue? Here are the steps that we take to address whatever that issue is, and then on top of that, is it equitable for everybody who may be experiencing this process?
Okay, well, I'm going to try and unpack everything you said.
And if you need to, I'll, I'll re-clarify.
I know you will. If I've missed something, let me know. But, so one, we do have a process in place that's 3210.
Can you break that down so we understand what happens when there is an issue with a, I'm going to just call it book, for lack of a better term.
Thank you.
Book, media selection, video, whatever it is, when there is an issue, what, what happens? What recourse?
Okay, so if, if I had a concern about a book, then I would, under 3210, as it is right now, I would then file a request for reconsideration, which is a form that, that this board has adopted, and I would say, I'm objecting to this book. Now, let's be consistent with the whole, that I've been, I've always talked about the grapes of wrath, or I believe I have. So if I was concerned about grapes of wrath, I would put down my reasons for concern, I would submit that to the principal, to the school, to the school where it is, okay? And I would put down my child's name. That is, and then that principal would develop a reconsideration committee similar to what I presented to y'all tonight, but at that, specifically at that school, okay? So that committee would then review, discuss, and make a determination about the book. You keep it in or you take it out. That's it. Okay? Now, if, whatever that decision is, that, if that decision is appealed, it gets appealed to the superintendent, a committee would be formed there to review it and make a determination, keep or re, or remove. If that decision is appealed, it gets to the board, y'all, to make a decision. That's the process that's in right now. Since that process has been adopted, a couple of things that have raised a concern. If a parent does not want to put his or her name down, what happens? If a parent doesn't want to put down his or her child's name, what happens? So there, from what I understand, there may be some concerns about that and did not submit the request for reconsideration. So the, the gap would be if we have somebody that wants to be anonymous or doesn't want to be involved at all, but the board is concerned about a book, how does the board act on that book? And that was the impetus of 3211. I think I answered all of your questions, so it would, so I think I answered all your questions. If I didn't, please let me know.
Jay, I want to interrupt just for one second.
Yes.
To add actually what happened, so that this is very clear. So all of that's true and accurate if it works, and, and that takes place. But what happened was the person who actually brought the, the problem or the challenge didn't meet the criteria of the existing policy where they didn't have a child at that school. So that was also the issue, too, that needs to be a part of the process that's vetted. That was the issue there.
One, one thing that I didn't, I think I didn't answer, is how 3211 would be different than 3210, is it'd only be challenged at that school. So it'd only be challenged at school one. If that book is found in school two and three, then it would have to be challenged there as well. So how do you deal with that? And that's sort of what 3211, number one, would address. But number two is in understanding that potential pitfall, that's where the literature committee was going to be discussing it tomorrow night as to how do you deal with if that book is in multiple schools.
Okay, so all of this sounds like a few changes of, of the line somewhere and not a whole policy to me. I would agree with the rest of the board members, if we need to add some things or revise to the policies that are already in place, I would rather us do this. Lastly, I'll end by saying this. We have identified committees and people who are responsible for doing what we're talking about right now. And I feel like we're spending too much time on this topic when we have entities in place to address it. I'm saying that from my perspective, everybody else can feel what they want to feel, and I'd like for us to let those folks do their job.
So thank you for those, and that's really what the discussion is all about. The policy is not backed by the process. So everything that we do, if you've got a dress code violation, if you've got a staff issue, if you've got a student violate, whatever, what board policy is in violation and what is the process to get, get the answer either at the campus level, at the superintendent's level, or up to the Board of Education? We do not have a good process for this one, and that's what this committee really is all about. But the board has got to figure out the pieces and parts that need to happen of what do we do and what actions are taken before that we get there and those recommendations are being made. That's really more so where we're at. The loophole in between the time that the committee receives it, vets it, gets the recommendations back to the board, what we, do we do with those complaints prior to? So that's where we're at. So with that being said, I hear the board saying that they would like to incorporate it into 3210, which is fine. Mr. White can be directed to make that happen. I, I feel as the board chair that this needs to be discussed between our attorneys and our superintendent. I think Dr. Kapiki is probably the most accurate versus the board to decide what the reconsideration committee looks like. I know before, prior to my '04 to '12, I'm sure Mr. Farr and Ms. Carpenter remembers this as well, there were review committees at each campus. So that was a process, it just hasn't been done in the last several years. So I, I think there always was a process there that they used, and for some reason or not, it just, it just had not been, been, been utilized. So I think that's a conversation, my opinion, that needs to take place between Mr. White and Dr. Kapiki for whatever that process needs to look like, and then maybe that verbiage being tweaked or modified in that corrected or modified 3210. So board members, shall we take this back to the literacy committee for tomorrow night to vet all those different recommendations and then bring it back to our board or then on to the policy committee?
Madam Chair, I think since they are meeting tomorrow night, I think it would be a good idea to let them, so we could get some comments from them, and let them give some comments, and then two, I know that the policy committee will be meeting in October, so I think it'd be good to do that. be good to do that, and then send it on to the policy committee and let them look at it before it comes back to us. That way, we could get comments from them and the policy committee, then let it come back to us. That way, again, as I mentioned earlier, it's great to have as much input as we can, so we can make the very best decision we can with, you know, as much comment as we can. So we can make a great decision.
Thank you. Dr. Kapicki, would you like to comment?
So just sitting here reflecting and listening to the comments of the board, I'd like to commend the board for their input, and for some of their leadership as well, and for Madam Grimsley for bringing this up again, and with our vice chair Laura Blackwell bringing this to a, the attention of everyone, to better improve our processes. It's not an easy discussion, it has a lot of different opinions, but I think the process that you are talking about this evening and the civil discussion at the board has modeled, is exemplary in kind of how we should be doing things. So I really appreciate that leadership, and I think what you're recommending is a good process to send it off to the literature review committee, bring it back to policy. We can kind of take some of your recommendations this evening, talk those over, discuss them, and bring it back to the board for a recommendation and go from there. So again, I appreciate that, and I think your path forward is a good one. So thank you.
So, board members, can I just get a consensus that we're all in agreement for that process?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Sandich, Mr. Walton, good? Ms. Sackcock, all good? Okay, great. So Mr. White, thank you. Okay, with that being said, we'll also recognize the SROs that are with us tonight, and tell you how much we appreciate you always being at our meetings. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to 6.02, which are the superintendent comments. Dr. Kapicki?
Thank you, Ms. Grimsley. Several things this evening, I'm going to try and be brief, but I want to talk about two particular instances that happened, one on Friday evening at West Cabarrus High School, and another today at Northwest High School. First one occurred Friday night at a football game at West Cabarrus High School, where we had an incident with a young adult that was not associated with the Cabarrus County school system and was not our student, that caused a disruption at the concession stand that led into the stands and caused some chaos and some panic for a brief few moments amongst the audience that caused the game to be halted. What I want to point out here is that it was a, the situation is being investigated. As of this moment, our students were not involved in it. In fact, our students from West Cabarrus High School were outstanding in helping all the people that were there to get back into the stands and make sure that they were safe. Some had run to a hill on the side, on the backside of the end zone near a fence, and it was our students from West Cabarrus High School that ended up being a lot of, that showed a lot of really good young leadership in helping those folks go back into the stands and assure them that they were safe. I'd also like to commend the SROs and the Concord Police Department for their leadership, and for our administrators for being strategically placed across the stadium to be able to address the situation very quickly and to make sure that order was restored immediately. The game was paused for a couple of minutes until we got order back into play, but again, it was a situation that we're still investigating, and there were some other events that happened across several counties in the state that, I'm not saying that it was, but I'm not saying that it was not a kind of a copycat, TikTok, social media type thing that was, that influenced some of the events that happened. But the long and short of this really is, you know, we hear a lot of the negative things that take place in our world today, and our students have so much pressure on them that a lot of times we hear the negative. And it was our students, which makes me really, being with pride of West Cabarrus High School, that really took the ownership of the leadership to make sure that their game would continue to go on, that they would help the people get back into the stands, that they would be responsible, that they demonstrated calmness, and that they made sure that everything was normal, and that there was no major drastic incident. There was no weapons, there was no weapons to be reported. Again, I've talked with the Concord Police, I've talked with Major McGee, I've had some discussions today with some of our administrative leaders. Dr. Snyder and her group did a fantastic job again in maintaining order. And I just think that that needs to be cleared up and stated. We are quick to criticize sometimes, and sometimes short to applaud and praise our students. So I think that's a community. I think it's our parents teaching our kids all the right things, I think it's our teachers and administrators working with their kids, and it's our kids owning it and making sure that they carry out the right actions, which they did. So again, it was not our students, and I want to be real clear on that, because I don't want any, anybody saying it was a West Cabarrus kids. And it doesn't really matter who it was, it's wrong, but I don't want any negative publicity coming to our students when they did everything right, and they should be commended and not torn down for anything. They did a great job, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm proud of the, I'm just proud to be part of the community and to watch some of those wonderful things take place in front of your eyes with your administrators, your police, and your community, and everybody working together. So I thank them for that. The second thing is, there was a bomb scare today at Northwest High School. The incident started around 9:25, and immediately, our law enforcement was involved along with our assistant principals, under the leadership of Lacy Jacobs, who did a fantastic job at implementing our safe school protocols under this particular type of a situation. Unfortunately, again, the world we live in, we deal with these things. We deal with bomb scares and threats and social media threats and things of that nature. This particular situation, a note was found in the school, it was given to the administrators, a lockdown was immediately put into place, and the, again, our safe school protocols went into place under the leadership of our administrators. Gordon Palmer, our assistant superintendent from the high school, was on the scene immediately. We worked with law enforcement to evacuate the school, to the evacuation site, and they stayed in that evacuation site till approximately 11:30, 11:45, until they returned to school, when the law enforcement cleared the building, that it was safe to go back into the building. One of the things that's come up to us, and I've talked to several people today and some parents, is the communication. The communication when these things happen, how do we get that communication out to parents to let you know that everyone is safe, that everything is okay, that you don't need to worry, we have it under control? Sometimes we can do it real quick, other times we can't, because these are fluid things that occur. And what I want to assure you is this, our faculty, our staff, our students, our administrators, our SROs are very well-trained in what to do under these extreme circumstances, under these trying circumstances, under these stressful moments when they occur. And in this situation is no different. All of those acting folks did a great job in maintaining safety and order in our school. Upon reflection and upon some discussion with some of our administrators, when we did our after-action review today, late this afternoon, and we're going to continue that tomorrow, we're going to talk about, how can we improve that communication to make people, especially parents, feel a little more at ease that while there's a very tense situation perhaps happening, how can we communicate out to you quicker to make you feel that everything is okay? I'd like to sit here and say to you, I can guarantee nothing ever will happen, but I think we all know that'd be inappropriate, but I can tell you this, our protocols, our routines, our processes, and all the things that we do to maintain a safe environment are very, very good. And we continue to review, discuss, and work with all the appropriate personnel to make sure that we're staying on top of our safe, our safe school protocols. But I appreciate the feedback today, I appreciate the parents reaching out to me, I appreciate the various adults that reach out to me in terms of, how can we better get that communication out to put people at ease? And I promise you, we will look at that and try and improve upon that, but I will say this, our intent is always to take care of kids first, and when you have those evacuations, you're moving a thousand kids, or more at times, sometimes it's difficult to, you know, get those messages out ASAP, but we will definitely look at and try and do a better job of communicating that to our parents. So I thank you for your patience, I thank you for your feedback. Your feedback helps to make us better, it helps to inform our processes to make sure that what we're doing is working, and also forces us to take a hard look at some of the things that are not working, so that we then can go back and make them better, and again, focus on making sure we maintain a safe environment. So I just wanted to update the public on that. And again, to our students at Northwest High School, you were exemplary today. The way you handled yourselves in that evacuation, we don't give our kids enough credit for all the good that they do. And they were fantastic today, and represented themselves in such a mature, patient, calm fashion in a very tense situation, I'm very proud of them. So to the West Cabarrus High School students and to Northwest High School students, very proud of you and continue your leadership, you did a fantastic job, and we are definitely grateful for what you're doing on a day-to-day basis in our schools. You continue to represent us in extraordinary, wonderful fashion, and we are very honored by that. And then thirdly, the last thing for me this evening is, I'm going to ask Carl Sane, our director of academic, excuse me, our director of advanced academics to come up, and as many of you may know, September 1st, the state released our most recent test data and our test scores and results, and I've talked with Carl Sane and some of the people in his department to give the board and the public an overview of where we are right now. And I want you to be mindful that while there's always opportunities for growth and areas of improvement, we know that, I'm very proud of our faculty, our staff, and our students, because I think, coming off of a year and a half of, almost two years of a pandemic, to see where we are right now, and also to this board for supporting our teachers and making sure they have what they need in the classrooms, I think you're going to see what I see. You see teachers working very hard to educate our students, and students working very hard to achieve. Again, it's not to say that we don't have opportunities for growth, we do, but Cabarrus County Schools is on the right path, and it takes all of us working together to do that. Starts with our board, who is definitely committed to helping teachers and kids, and are always focused on what's best for kids. I've yet to have a conversation with this board where they don't focus on kids and talk about what's best for kids. And it definitely trickles down into the classroom. And to our teachers, I remind you, all of our faculty, you are second to none. Continue the outstanding work that you do in dedicating all of your efforts to helping our students. We value it, we appreciate it, and again, we're grateful for all that you do. Mr. Sane, if you will?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share our district's recent school report card data, as it highlights many wonderful things that are happening across our district pertaining to teaching and learning. As you may know, NCDPI released statewide data on September 1st, as Dr. Kapicki just mentioned. This includes achievement and growth data at the school and district levels. Tonight, I'm going to exclusively talk about the district-level results. Numerous headlines told the story that North Carolina is not quite back to pre-pandemic levels, and that we're still battling COVID learning loss. The more nuanced story to tell is to understand that our administrators, teachers, and students conquered some tremendous challenges last year. They battled record teacher absences, student absences, interruptions, a lack of substitute coverage, to bring our district back to 92% of its pre-pandemic proficiency rates. If you talk to an administrator or to a teacher, they'll likely tell you that the story of the 2021-22 school year was the most difficult year that they've ever faced. Cabarrus County teachers rose to the challenge due to the hard work and perseverance of all staff members supporting students and helping, helping to, helping to get back to pre-pandemic levels. This presentation is going to provide some background and some, make some relevant comparisons so that our data can be seen in the context of the rest of the state, our region, and our place as one of the largest districts in the state. So the assessments on this screen are the specific components that are included in the achievement scores. There's separate scores from elementary and middle school as it is compared to high school, and then the components factored into the growth are shown at the bottom of this chart. I'm going to focus heavily on the EOG and EOC scores, but I will mention the rest of the scores associated with high school. As a reminder, the school performance grade is constituted by two pieces, achievement and growth. This can be calculated by multiplying the achievement by 80% and the growth by 20%. When I'm explaining this to a lot of administrators and teachers, I think of it as simply counting achievement four parts to one part growth. I know there's been some conversation about modifying that formula, but what this does is, any changes or fluctuations in achievement are compounded heavily and drastically alter some of the school performance grades, because achievement is factored four times. I wanted to share one quick example, almost pretending that the state of North Carolina had its own report card grade, or almost pretending that there was a school that was exactly on the average for the state of North Carolina. So you can see what's happened to the proficiency across the state from 2019 to '21 to '22. So across the state, there was a big dip from 2019 to '21 in proficiency, and then it's jumped back up in '22. On the right, you can see the school performance grades.
Carl, I apologize to interrupt you, but just for clarification, 2020, we did not test because of the pandemic, which is why you don't see 2020 in any of the data. Thank you.
Thank you, that's correct. So we were all at home, there was not a secure testing environment in June of 2020. On the right, you can see the school performance grades as a 15-point scale, and so again, that's, that letter grade is calculated by 80% achievement and 20% growth. If a school was exactly in the middle of the state last, or in 2019, with 58.8% achievement, that would have been multiplied by .8 for a net of 47 points, then they would have received some growth score. The average growth score would have been about 10 points, and that school would have received 47 plus 10, 57 points. So the average score in 2019 would have been a C grade with 57 points. In 2022, we've now dropped seven points from that 2019 score, and so what that does is, because that seven-point drop is counted four times in achievement, we would multiply 51% times .8, your achievement score is noticed six points below the other achievement score. So that means if you had a typical growth of 10 points plus the 41, you would end up with 51 points. So the same score, the same score that was the average in 2019, that is the average in 2022, would have moved from a C score to a D score. So I just show this as an example of why achievement is counting four times and how impactful that is. I also wanted to show that as an example, that across the state, school report card grades dropped because achievement dropped and because that's counted four times. I also say that because our schools in Cabarrus County have exceeded the state's proportional representation. So across the state of North Carolina, there are very few A schools, there are very few B schools. Only about 22 or 23% of schools across the state receive either an A or a B. In Cabarrus County schools, about 37 or 38% of our schools have received an A or a B. Obviously, there's some work to be done with the schools that score a Level C or a Level D, but again, some of that is because of the way this is calculated and because of the drop across the state. While these schools, while these scores are not, perhaps not as strong as they were pre-pandemic, the overarching theme throughout this presentation is going to show that we are exceeding state and regional averages, and that our teachers and administrators have narrowed the COVID-induced proficiency gap at a pace that exceeds the state average. I did want to show what has happened in Cabarrus County over the last three testing sessions, so from 2019 through '21 and then through '22. You can see that in blue are the same numbers that I just showed from the state, green shows the scores from Cabarrus County schools, and this is across all grades and across all tested subjects. You can see that we had a dip in proficiency, but we've bounced back up. To outline what each score has looked like, this chart shows all of the major tested subjects in our elementary, middle, and high schools. These are broken down by individual grades, but I felt like this was enough information to get the perspective. The percentage shown is the percentage of students that score either a Level 3, 4, or 5, and are grade-level proficient. And then to the right, you can see how we rank in the state according to each of those metrics. The Math 1 proficiency is the only score listed that does not include our advanced learners. Those are only students that took Math 1 in high school, whereas many of our advanced learners took Math 1 in middle school. The next slide shows the exact same chart, except instead of grade-level proficient, this represents students that are college and career-ready. So these students have scored either a Level 4 or a Level 5 on the assessment. You'll notice that we actually do better on these metrics for the most part than we do on grade-level proficient. So we come out around 10th across all subjects in the state, which is phenomenal for a large I did, I was struggling to come up with a good way to talk about, to put some of this in perspective, and so what's happened over the last three years, some schools have dropped precipitously, some districts have dropped quite a bit, and then bounced back dramatically or maybe bounced back just a small amount. So because of the fluctuations in how much some districts have dropped, either a lot or just a little bit, what I tried to do was compare where our districts at compared to where we were before the pandemic. As you can see, we dropped by 10% proficiency in one year, but some districts dropped by 15 or 20% from that 2019 to '21 school year. So it's kind of hard to see, when you just look at the growth from the last year to this year, it's hard to kind of gauge. So what I wanted to do was compare where were schools at in 2019, and how much of that proficiency have we retained since? So for instance, Cabarrus County Schools was at 65.6% proficient, and we are now at 60.2% proficient, so we have, we are at 92% of our pre-pandemic level. As a point of comparison, you can see out of, these are the largest 12 districts in the state. A lot of times, we compare ourselves to the biggest 12 districts, because these are districts that are associated in a large district collaborative together. Similarly, I made the same comparison to see how we do with surrounding districts. You'll notice that Union County was listed in both, and Charlotte Mecklenburg was, and a few others were listed. few others were listed in both. For the most part, you can see that Cabarrus County is at or near the top in retaining proficiency from that pre-pandemic level. I did also want to mention, these are the other components that factor into that achievement. So the achievement that counts four times in the formula is your EOG and EOC data. In high school, these factors are also listed. The four-year graduation rate is a component of the same achievement. I wanted to show what this looks like over the last four years. You can see that we've dipped in our graduation rate in the last year. That's a similar phenomenon to what's happened across the state. Cabarrus County Schools does still exceed the state average for the four-year graduation So everything that I've mentioned so far pertains to achievement. Those are all the things that go into an achievement score, so if any of those things drops, keep in mind that drop counts four times. There's also an associated growth score that counts. This is also a really good place to commend our teachers' growth, whereas achievement really focuses on students that are at or near the proficiency level. It does not really factor in students at the very top of the level or students at the very bottom if they're not right near that proficiency mark. Growth does factor in how all students have done. Every single student has a projection, and then if we exceed that projection for that student, or if we do not meet that projection for a student, then our growth can either be positive or negative. Then they average all of that up for each school across every single assessment. So each school across every single subject and across every single grade, and then the school as a whole, will either receive a mark that says exceeded expected growth, meaning our students met more than one standard error, I'm sorry, more than two standard errors of growth. They either met expected growth, or they did not meet expected growth. Across the state, 28% of North Carolina schools exceed growth and 29% do not meet growth. I was excited to see that more of our schools exceed and very few of our schools do not meet growth. Again, there is some work to be done with some schools that did not meet growth, but for the most part, Cabarrus County Schools exceeded state and regional averages with And then I just wanted to recap with what the grades look like now that we've discussed the achievement component and the growth component. So whereas again, the state of North Carolina has very few schools that are As and Bs, we have disproportionately more As and B schools than the rest of the state. Cabarrus County Schools is outpacing our surrounding area and large districts in returning to pre-pandemic levels of proficiency, in growing students regardless of ability level, and then of course, in these school report card grades. Somebody have questions about this data?
Sorry. Okay. Thank you. That is great information, and we've all been waiting on this. So I'm just going to open the floor for discussion, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
Thank you so much for sharing this information. It's a lot to look at, but I think it shows a picture of just continuous perseverance of our educators, our school leaders, and just the whole system to bring our kids back to where they were prior to the pandemic. So thank you to everyone. Once you have a plan in place, are there going to be any next steps that you look at that will direct how we continue to get those levels up?
So to be perfectly clear, some of this data is actionable data that we can use for next steps. A lot of that data will actually come out later. So for instance, EVOs data that is this expected met or did not meet growth gives us reports on how each individual student did, how each teacher did, how each grade level did, and then how different subgroups of students did within each of those courses. And so we'll be able to communicate that information to their next grades teacher so that those teachers can have more information about how to meet those students' needs.
That's excellent. Thank you very much.
Ms. Carpenter.
Well, it's exciting in one aspect, and then it gives us something to work towards in the next aspect. You know, of course, we want to see, we never want to see a D. We always want to see an A, B, or C, and so hopefully, you will show us how we can take those Ds and turn them into A, B, or Cs. And so hopefully, that'll be the next thing we'll see, is how to turn those Ds into Cs at least. And so I was encouraged by it because all we keep hearing is learning loss, learning loss, but this just shows what wonderful teachers, wonderful staff, and wonderful people we have, and shows how hard they worked through those two years. And we can be very proud of our staff and what they've done. So you know, we do have things we need to do, and this shows it, but it does show we have got a lot we can be proud of too. And so I'm just, I'm proud of what we've done, and it does show we've got some work to do. But I want to thank everybody, thank staff, thank administration for what we've done, and show we've just got a little bit of work to do, but thank everybody.
Ms. Blackwell.
So also, thank you for this information. So the EVOs data that you said breaks it down even further, when will we be getting that information out?
So EVOs has three different release dates, if I'm not mistaken. They're typically all from September through November. The first release date was a big picture, how did each school do? The second release that they'll do is actually individual school-level data. So right now, our schools do not have individual EVOs data for each student. So the next release of data, if I'm not mistaken, will be each student's projection in each of the courses they're taking so that the teachers have some information on where students have historically been. And then, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around November, we'll typically get that final piece of information, which is how each teacher did in EVOs, how each school has done, how each grade level, and how each course has done on the EVOs from last year.
So once those EVOs, once that EVOs data comes out, we'll be able to strategize more specifically, and I just say that in regards to, you know, just looking at this overview, the Math 1 obviously is not at a good place of where we need it to be, and then of course, the four-year graduation rate as well. So at that point, and Dr. Kapicki, you can speak to this too, I'm just wondering, do we have a plan in place once that data comes out to go in there and strategize and get some solid information down so that we can get this fixed?
Absolutely. So our administrators are well-versed in how to use data to drive decision-making. We have MTSS structures in place, both at the county office and at school-level sites to look at data to examine what are students' needs. We take benchmark assessments quarterly in elementary, middle school, and then every six weeks in high school. And what we can look at is not just proficiency across each of those benchmarks, we can look at individual schools, across classes, across PLCs, and compare how students are doing on the benchmark to how they should be expected to do according to EVOs growth. And a lot of the times, that's just a tool that teachers can use to see which types of students, or which groups of students, or which classrooms maybe could be performing a little bit better on benchmarks.
There was just one thing, because we were talking about these letter grades, and when we had Kristin Baker and our legislators here, that was one thing we talked about, and you just basically hit on it, changing that formula, which we've been talking about since day one. And it is, when we had our meeting, we talked about how important, how out of whack that formula is. We really need to make sure, we stress how important it is. That 80/20 is just so unfair, putting so much emphasis on, you know, less on the growth and more on the proficiency. So we need to really stress that when we talk to our legislators to make sure that they change that formula because it is so unfair. We need to really get more into growth and less into the proficiency. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay.
But I will need to get that plug in because we do need to change that, and we need to make sure we have that on our legislative.
That is part of the legislative agenda that we approved, and it actually, that's before you, but that is part of Cabarrus County Schools legislative agenda, and it was also part of the surrounding districts as well.
Because if it had been different, we would have been in a lot better shape than what we are right now. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Blackwell, were you finished?
Yeah, and I also just wanted to say thank you to the teachers. I know that these last couple of years have been extremely difficult on everyone, so we know that you guys worked so hard to try and keep our children, you know, at least within a certain range, and we obviously have been able to do that. You know, it's not my, I want to see Cabarrus County be number one and be the best, and so it's nice to see us, that some of our numbers are better than others, but that still doesn't change the fact that I want us to be the best of the best. But thank you, I appreciate you bringing this information to us.
Mr. Farr.
Thanks for the data. You know, this kind of just validates, I think, what most of us knew, that being out of the classroom for the period of time we were out of the classroom, we were going to have issues. But also, this validates the fact that how outstanding our teachers are and what a job they have done in the past couple of years to get us back to close. And so there's, to me, there's no question, the next report we get will be exceeding a lot, so thank you.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I also appreciate the time you took to present the numbers, and you know, there's a lot here to digest. Obviously, you can make numbers look different ways. I think what was really eye-opening to me, though, was the state data where it's not an equal distribution for the A, B, C, and D's where you have over 70% of schools in the state are going to be C or less. It's not real great in telling a real picture. And that's really what people look at when they want to see how a school is, is what is their letter grade? I mean, essentially, that's a test, how the kids are doing on a test, it may not even be a good test day. So that's concerning, but that's what we have here in North Carolina. I know we've been talking for at least six months, if not longer, about strategic plans. I would assume that the achievement is a big part of that strategic plan. When you get to your part, can you give us an update on where we are with our strategic plan? And I think the other part of that just highlights where the importance of the calendar can make an impact on this as well. So thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Sandich.
Back in my day, this would be indicative of a pizza party. This type of growth, considering all the odds that were stacked against us. I used to tell my kiddo, like usually when you bring a grade home that's lower than a B, like you're getting fussed at about all, you could have all As and one D, and you're getting fussed at about that D. I'm not fussing at my kid about this D because we have been through heck and back, and this just shows us that the people that we have working in this district, the community that surrounds us, and our kiddos are resilient. We need to continue to support those efforts as best as we can so that next year, we see that we've gotten better. And learning loss, who? Is what I would say. Thank you for this presentation, and I just want to say another thank you and kudos to all of the people that made this happen because without you, we wouldn't be here. I have one question for you. So I'm guessing we do this every single year, where we look at where we are, we evaluate this data, and we come up with a plan, right? So can you help me understand what a plan might look like? So we've got all of these three data points to look at, and we've identified, hey, we had something that happened in this area. What could a remediation look like? Does that make sense?
So the plans, the plan structures that we've been discussing for the last few weeks, as far as the Ed Center is concerned, and what kind of support we can provide for schools, is a lot of data disaggregation, data teaming structures so that we can, we have unbelievable people in our schools. We have unbelievable teachers, we have unbelievable administrators, they know how to break down data. We have MTSS coaches that can push in and support. So a lot of what we'll do is listen to data, data talks from administrators and from school teams. We put together plans and have conversations at the county level about what needs those schools may have, and then we have opportunities for them to come in during a data dive, problem solve, get away from the school, problem solve, discuss what their data currently says, try to create a plan of action. Our curriculum instruction specialists push out instructional opportunities for each of those schools if it's something related to instruction, but of course, some of these conversations are also associated with behavior, or discipline, or attendance issues. But we have teaming structures to look at discipline here between academic services, admin services, student support services, a lot of our different departments. And so our MTSS team gets together and reviews data and creates structures, and then we push that out, we bring schools in to have a common dialogue about what they could do next.
Sounds like a well-oiled machine.
Thank you very much for doing that so quickly.
Just real quick, do I have the capability to NovaScan up here? To NovaScan to put something up on the screen? If I get the code? I understand, do you have the capability to pull that down that I can NovaScan, or That's all I want to show is in this room, right? I can do it from here, though, right? Okay. Real quick, and the board will be patient with me, I just want to share something with you real quick, I'll take a moment.
And you thought I threw y'all curves.
There you go. So on that note, too, I'd like to announce two things, too, this evening. Our current enrollment right now is 34,717 students in climbing, and that's as recent as today, so we will keep you updated on that as well. And then secondly, I want to thank the county commissioners this evening. They had their meeting tonight as well, and I have been informed that they have approved our additional four SROs. So beginning as soon as possible, we'll have SROs at all of our early colleges in our preschool full-time, which means that we will have an SRO at every building in our school system. So we talk partnership and community, we talk working together. I think our county commissioners and their leadership deserve a round of applause for their support for us, so thank you. Can you read me those numbers, Kelly, or what they are?
Yes, sir. 10 dot 1023 dot 176.
No, 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 just give me the four numbers.
The four.
Yeah. Okay. So we've talked vision, I'm not going to go through this real, I'm not going to, I'm going to go through this real quick. But Mr. Walter brings up a point about our strategic plan. We just went over our strategic plan today in one of our final rough draft sessions with our cabinet, and we are kind of putting the final touches on this. So this is a culmination of a year's work. It's not something that you do quickly, you take your time to do it so you get it right. It is not all-inclusive of every problem or every issue in the district, but what it is, is it's a big-picture plan to improve, to put the district on a continuous improvement plan. By that is, I mean this. Last year, if you recall, we went around to all the schools, we did an exercise and talked about values and what we needed to improve, what the strengths are and what the weaknesses are. We also did that with a lot of our parents, and we also sent out the K-12 insight survey to all of our parents in December of last year. We took all of that information, which was an enormous amount of information, and pulled that all together from our teachers who did this exercise with their principals in their schools, and we took all 44 schools, all the K-12 insight, took all that data, put it together and kind of aligned what the big repetitive issues were being repeated over and over again. Again, it's not all-inclusive, but it gives us a good pathway forward. So this is the title page of that particular plan, as you can see. And again, I'm going to go through this real fast, but just to give you a, and I'll spend a detailed amount of time on this in the next meeting in October because it'll be done by then. I will have this wrapped up by the end of the month. There's an intro, that is a very bad picture of a very old man. It's our board, and an intro by our chair, Mrs. Grimsley. There's our table of contents, our core commitments, gives you kind of the sections we laid out. Talks a little bit about some of the things that we do here, just for, you know, when you think about Cabarrus County, we served over 1.8 million breakfasts last year and 3.1 lunches. We have 65 different languages being spoken in our school system. Just some things for you to think about. 48 pathways, 45 school choices. It's our timeline, some of our points of pride, and there are the six big ideas we're focusing on. Student wellness, teaching and learning, diverse educator pipeline, early learning, technology-enhanced learning, community alignment. Everything focuses back to teaching and learning, number two being the big one. Some highlights, some data, opportunities for improvement. Some of this is redlined, ignore that. It takes time, is my point, you have to make sure you get this right when you're putting it out. And it talks about our case for the future. it out. And it talks about our case for the future, and where we're trying to go. And we're focused on a quality education, a quality staff, safety, communication, and our diversity. Looking at our culture, being future-ready, make sure that we're providing the access, resources, and opportunities for all of our students. Trying to align, if you look at the arrows, we're trying to align it all in one path as we move forward. Then each section has its own section. Within that section, there's a title page. All of these pictures are our students. And on every picture, the, the intro, you'll see the goal in the bottom right. And then what you'll see is a page that has basically three years. This is a three-year plan. So, you'll see the objectives on the far left, and then the objectives line to year one. And then you have year two and year three. And then what we'll do is put measurements in on those objectives, to see if we've accomplished what we said we said we were setting out to do. So, each page has a, a section. So, you'll see the teaching and learning, the diverse educator pipeline, its own goals. It's all color-coded. Early learning. If you're like me, the color helps you. It's a visual. I'm very visual in my learning. So, it helps me to align things up from a color perspective. Technology, you'll see the goal. You'll see the objectives and the initiatives, the three-year plan. Our community alignment. Think about this. You should be so proud of this. We have our own, our own fire and safety school here. And that's incredible. We're training kids to, to walk into careers when they leave here. It's wonderful. And then finally, what we did is, we took all of these goals and lined them to a report card. So, each year has a report card. So, the first one's still wellness. You'll see the 1.1 to 1.5. They're all the goals. And they line up back to the strategic initiatives. And you'll see the red, yellow, and green. It'll be very simple for you. If we hit green at the end of the year, we accomplished it. If we hit yellow, it means we're moving forward, and we're trying to, to make progress in that area. If we hit red, we didn't get there, and we would have an explanation as to why we didn't. Either we didn't get to it, we failed, or we moved on for a different reason. So, each area has its own report card that we're going to report out to the public. This will be a digital format on the website. We will also have some hard copies for our community. But you'll be able to go to this, on, on the website, and look at the digital report for you to take a peek at. So, you'll see how we're doing and progressing. And then we're kind of working on some of the rest of the stuff. So, I share this with you to say to you, this is not all-inclusive, but it gives us a really good roadmap to move forward, to continuously be focused on improving the school system, and make it better for all of our community, especially our students, which is the, the why behind everything that we do. So, you know, Mr. Walters has, has talked to this several times. I just wanted to give the board a real quick flash, and the committee a little bit up here, that we're, we're close. It just takes a lot of time, because there's a lot of work that goes into it. And also, you know, many of us, myself included, are new. And we have to get to know each other first, and get to understand the problems, and be very careful that what we're touching is the right stuff, and we're making good, informed decisions on the data that we receive from all of you. So, I thank you for your patience. I look forward to bringing this back to you in October, and sharing it with the community, and, and telling you we're good to go and move forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kapiki. And just for the transparency of the viewing audience, I appreciate Mr. Wright giving us the, the reminder that we probably need to put this on board docs, even as a draft version, just so that the general public knows what we were all looking at tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Will do.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to 6.03, Board Attorney Comments. Mr. Wright, anything at all? Okay. All right. Thank you. We will move on to 7.01, which is now our guest speakers that will address the board. I will read the opening statement, and then we will begin with those speakers. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaker, speaker for a group may be allowed up to five minutes, at the discretion of the board chair. Speakers will be called in the order in which we received their request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting, and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. With that being said, we will start with speaker number one, which is Roland Jordan. Mr. Jordan? Good evening. If you'll just key the mic up, please, sir.
Representative, since I got a little bit of dimension, but I'm going to get my point across. I was one of them students that was left behind. But wisdom from God, I kept going, and I made it. Praise God. So, the motto, leave no kid behind. Leave no kid behind. Sometime, it's going to take a one-on-one. You learn more sometime instead of a group. That's my experience as a Christian person. This academic is, is not over yet. I had a goddaughter, had it about two months ago. So, I ask you to be cautious before you run and try to get everything back in order. That's when I wear my mask around the crowd, you know, the disease spreads, you know. And I want to focus, as I look around, I see most whites, and no menards, and no blacks, and nothing. We need some reverberation in our community. Because when I sit down and talk to my white brothers and sisters, I get to know you. You know, Mr. Superintendent, you're about the only superintendent I, I had to dress and talk to, you know. So, that's why I come, question, why come one person don't have all the answers? Only one person have all the answers, Jesus Christ, whether you believe it or not. But one day, you'll find out. But, some of the things I wanted to focus on was, I walked out, I worked on a work study, because our kids, I don't know, don't know sexual stuff, and books and stuff. That's bad for our kids. What we going, I said to my mom, we're going to have virgins at, you know? I made a statement that we might have coned them, but that ain't good. You know, we need to teach our kids, you know, to be married, you know, and be, and respect each other, you know, get their education. That's very important, you know. Race relation, very important. You know, I experienced that in the Bible class in '69. Just because I wasn't that, that's a father, and didn't like blood. But being in the military now, I ain't got no problem with blood. Praise God. But anyway, let's show you what race will do. Because I was mostly raised up at a black school, you know, forced to go to a white school. But anyway, that's it. I need my white, and all of y'all to get together and, and feed us fire. Because we people just like you, you ain't no better than us. And we ain't no better than you. And we ain't afraid of you, and you ain't afraid of us. When I'm a speaker, I'm a warrior. I talk for my people. If that's my time is up?
You still have a few seconds.
Okay, I've got a few seconds. Okay. And, uh, there was a child, mother was crying because her kid got lost on the wrong bus. I think I talked to Ms. Blackwell about it, you know, that, uh, maybe a name tag of somebody that could recognize that kid. Or he's just somebody that's on the bus. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Speaker number two is Heather Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You said you wanted me to hit something here? It's keyed. You're good. Oh, okay. You give me a hand. Good evening, Superintendent, Board of Education members, and the general public. My name is Heather Jones, and my daughter attends Roberta Road Middle School. Tonight, I stand before you to shine a big, glaring, and not-so-very favorable light on the lack of transportation servicing students in Cabarrus County, specifically Roberta Road Middle School. I am here to sound all of the alarms and implore those in the position to make better decisions to directly affect, that directly affect Cabarrus County students for a solution. We have a huge problem, and we need help. In the first two weeks of school, my daughter's morning bus was on time just one lone morning. Mathematically speaking, that translates to just 11% accuracy. On September 7th, my daughter's bus did not arrive at school until 10:05 a.m. This means that she missed not only homeroom and first period, but she also missed part of second period on her math as well. The afternoon bus route is even worse. On the first day of school, my daughter did not arrive home until over an hour after middle school dismissal. I would like to point out that the Glen Grove neighborhood is a mere .6 miles away from the school. We live across busy, congested Roberta, Roberta Road, without clear designated sidewalks or crosswalks, without a present crossing guard or police officer to direct traffic and ensure pedestrian safety. While communication from Roberta Road Middle School regarding busing has slightly improved, the delays have definitely not improved. Just this past week, we received a call 30 minutes before dismissal, informing us of afternoon bus delays of up to two hours late. How can students be ready and eager to learn, striving for excellence when they have been left at the bus stop? To always expect bus delays is not the proper precedent to be setting here. As educators, I know that you understand best of all that students learn greatest from the examples and actions put before them. What lessons do you think are being taught here? Thanks to Cabarrus County School's social media and website app, we all know that September is National Attendance Awareness Month. Some key points from the Cabarrus County Schools' provided website point out that supporting families, students, and staff physically and emotionally improves attendance. And when the whole community collaborates with families and schools, we can overcome barriers to attendance and engagement. With chronic bus delays and absences with cer, from certain key core classes at no fault of the riders, students are missing school. They are missing valuable and key information. How is the loss of critical and important instruction time being resolved and recouped? Reducing the number of bus stops, adjusting the bus times, to calling in the National Guard to drive buses while new drivers are recruited and trained in a timely manner, are examples of tangible and actionable steps that can be taken to ensure that students get to and from school on time every day. The past several years of COVID-affected school instruction and remote, remote learning have forced our children to be resilient, pliable, and flexible. However, now is the time for consistency, reliability, and dependability. Now is the time to show up in the school bus, to meet every student at their bus stop every day, on time, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three, Jess Kosky.
Good evening.
Hi. My daughter left this for me. She knew that I was nervous, and it's a little good luck clover. I love our kids. All right. Hi, my name is Jessica Kosky. I have two children in our district. Politics have become more and more polarizing. With live YouTube streaming, public optics have become really important to school boards all over America. Even though the seven school board members are politicians with campaigns, some are reactive, and donors to please, I really want to compel each of you to remember that no issue is absolute. People are not good or bad. And when parents come to you, they do so because they love their children, and they hope that you represent everyone, even when you don't agree with us or answer our emails. Although, I believe first, that books are tools for understanding complex issues, so limiting students' access to books makes it more difficult for them to handle their issues, and that politicians should not be making decisions for other parents' children by limiting reading selection chosen by educators, that's not actually what I want to discuss today. My big concern is that I do not believe the board should feel the responsibility to handle and come up for solutions for all of these issues by yourself. I heard it said earlier tonight, that you guys have great leaders with extensive training, a new superintendent you've picked out, you have a chief academic officer, assistant superintendents of elementary, middle, and high school, curriculum coordinators, principals, assistant principals, media specialists, counselors, and teachers. When you have that problem, like you're getting parents saying that they're concerned about books in the schools, then why aren't we going to Dr. Kapiki and saying, hey, we have this problem. Can you guys figure out a plan? There are professionals that could research, collaborate, and create an educationally sound plan to present at the next meeting. The same thing that goes with learning loss. Last week, we were told that we were wasting our time talking about this when we could be talking about learning loss. But I've been watching these board meetings all year, and I haven't really seen anything that addresses learning loss. I know we're changing the calendar, but, I mean, I think that's just gaming the system. If we're really learning, the kids are really learning, I don't think a two-week break makes, makes a break the difference, and if they learn. I feel like we should be asking Dr. Kapiki to create a plan to address learning loss, because it's such a win-win for everyone. Educational leaders will create a better plan than non-educators. You guys get to take credit for the plan, because you asked for it. And your staff will see that you trust their judgment, and feel more valued in this situation than they currently feel. In closing, please trust your staff to do what they are trained to do. And as far as politics, no, that 67% of voters oppose efforts to remove books from school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four, Sam Treadaway.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank you for your time and energy. I know it's been an interesting couple of years, and I know it's not necessarily fun all the time. Wanted to bring up a few things to your attention. Some of those were brought up last week. First of all, in regards to our literature review, you may have, I know you received my email earlier in interest of time, and I thank you in advance for sending that to our committee, so they could see that before their, prior to their meeting tomorrow. One of the things, I know there's many issues that we may have differences on, but I think one that came up last week, and I want to thank Ms. Herndon for that, is drawing our laser-focused, collective-focused about the fund balance. And I know I'm concerned about that. I know you are, because you shared that last week. I don't know the answers, but I know that it's hard to solve a problem until you focus on it. And I want to thank her for bringing that to our collective attention. And then lastly, the calendar. I've been a strong advocate for getting our secondary schools' first semester done before our winter break. I am of a certain age where I remember what it was like working in and teaching in a high school before the law, the calendar law changed. It was a huge difference, and it's a huge impediment. And I am so glad that we're at least exploring ways where our calendar reflects our academic needs instead of our lobbyist needs. So, I want to thank you for at least exploring that, and looking for options, or waivers, or whatever it takes. Again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you. Speaker number five, Elizabeth Rory. Good evening. Ms. Rory, you have five minutes.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Grimsley. Yes. Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Rory. I'm with Moms for Liberty. And actually, I was learning some stuff tonight. So, I've got two kids, two in Northwest Middle, and I'm grateful that they're there. The, we've got a great principal. I just want to say that first. As I was listening tonight, there's two things I want to bring up. And one is, is I want to go over the material, because some people say it's not pornographic, and then some also say that we need a committee. I know this is like a moving target at this point. I know there's a lot to look at and review, and to see what to do about this. But I want to say, too, that Ms. Grimsley also said that, I believe I heard you say that this wasn't a policy, but the process, the process was the problem. But to me, the process is the policy. So, there's two things. No graphic or pornographic materials in schools. And I'll tell you why. Most of the community has said no to this kind of material. It is a hard thing to judge. It is a hard thing to evaluate. It is a hard thing to, what's good for my kid might be different for your kid. It is not something that any adult in an educational situation should look at and be considered and be responsible for. I wouldn't want it as a teacher. I really wouldn't. And I don't think anybody else would. Last week, only highlighted that we have a problem. The Charlotte Observer posted that we had that in our school. We had to argue about it at the meeting, about whether we needed to remove kids or not remove kids. We're adults. If we have that much discussion over that, then how are we to do that to a teenager's mind? Their minds are still developing. It is unfair to put them in that situation. And again, some parents may be okay with it. Some parents may not be with, okay with it. So, I do see a big problem, too, with having a committee. Because who's on that committee? That committee could be made of, either side could be unequal, we'll say. It could be, a committee could be of high, people who really don't have a problem with it. It could be a committee of people who really do have a problem with it. It's going to be very hard to weigh that. I would say, no committee. You need to rewrite the policy. It would be almost illegal for you to hold a committee responsible. Because say, I say there's a committee, and we have, they say it's not pornographic. But my son comes home, and he's reading a book about something like last week. I consider that pornographic. Somebody else might say it's not. I've seen it on Facebook today. They said it was not. Well, I actually disagree. So, at that point, if it's okay for his classroom, and I've got to get special permission for him to get another book, then he gets ridiculed in school. him to get another book, then he gets ridiculed in school. And then who was, and then say, I get denied that request. Who do I hold responsible? Who's responsible for this? Who, the committee? The school board? The superintendent? This is opening a whole web of issues. So I would be very careful about thinking about having a committee. I would rewrite the policy if I was in your shoes. Because just like at work, if I'm doing something, I've got to follow policy. That is it. My boss won't come to me and say, oh, did you do your work? Yes, I'll say, yes, I did my work. If I didn't, do I say, oh, no, I need to go get a committee to help me figure out how to do this? No. We need to rewrite policy, we need to research it. Because I can't, we can't hold a committee responsible. We can't. And we can't vet those people either. So whatever side of the coin you're on, you need to be judicious to both sides, right? So it needs to be policy. And I wanted to say one last thing. So public schools is about public education. I think we need to be careful about what that education material is. Again, let's let our children be children. They've got enough as it is. I don't care if they're having problems outside of school, I don't care. I know I do care, excuse me. I'm just saying, private issues need to be private at home. Let the parents be parents, keep your policy, write the policy right so that it can be fair to all, but also not judge anybody on either side. And I'll wrap that up and say that I am against pornography material too, though, personally. And I know that this community as a whole is against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number six, Pam Everett.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Pam Everett. I'm a parent of a student who's been in Cabarrus County Schools for the past eight years. In that time, I have met dozens of employees in the school system, teachers, principals, coaches, librarians, custodians, bus drivers, resource officers, and administrative staff. Based on my interactions with the staff of this school system, I believe they are some of the most qualified and competent people I've ever met. I'm very glad I was here tonight to see a lot of them recognized because it makes me believe that I'm not the only one who believes this. They are competent, or they wouldn't be ordered. I must believe in this competence because I entrust my child's life to them every day for the majority of the day. Not only do I believe these educators are knowledgeable and competent in their respective fields, but I believe they wholeheartedly are looking out for the best interests of my child, and that they're ensuring that my child and all of their students are growing academically, emotionally, and socially. I know they care. I know they are competent, I know they are experienced, and I respect and trust my educators. My concern and why I'm here tonight is that in the policies that I have seen written recently in 3210 and 3211, make me worry that this board is sending a vote of no confidence to these educators. And this seems to be part of a trend in school districts across the US where politically motivated movements are encouraging the community to be wary of teachers and librarians, where their discretion, their judgment, and their expertise. Is this the way to support our children's education? Is this how we should be spending our time and our efforts? By undermining the very people who perform these activities for us? With the actions this board has considered, how will Cabarrus County Schools attract and retain teachers who want to be respected and trusted based on their skill, competence, and experience in education? An article in the Independent Tribune from March of this year stated, and I quote, "Cabarrus County Schools has been criticized for recently approving bonuses for some top-level executives but overlooking teachers, instructional assistants, and other key school personnel that support students. Board Chair Holly Grimsley has expressed frustration that she did not understand what she and other board members were approving when they took that vote," end quote. From this information, it seems that it is not unprecedented for this body to not fully weigh and understand all the repercussions of your actions. I hope that with these policies and others under your review, that you will investigate and consider the ripple effects, including severe negative impact to the ability to retain the excellent educators you have today, and to attract both quality and quantity of those types of educators in the future. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you. So speaker number seven has canceled, and I now need speaker number eight, Melanie Freeman.
Good evening. Good evening. I first of all want to applaud this board for the stand that they did take last week in protecting our children. That is the number one issue that we have before us. I also understand that you came under fire for transparency. But the very proponents of that said transparency want none in regard to the books, the sexually explicit books that are already supplied to our children. Parents and the community want accountability for the supplying of this material. Not only do we deserve an account of how our tax dollars are spent, but parents deserve an account of the vetting process and who made these decisions for these books to be in our libraries. According to General Statute 115(c)(81)30, reproductive health and safety instruction shall provide, along with other things, teaching that abstinence from sexual activity outside marriage is the expected standard for all school-aged children. This begs the question, why are there books supporting and encouraging the opposite in our libraries? And where are the books that should be supporting the abstinence, and are they being showcased also? The literacy and curriculum committees should address policy for vetting in addition to parental objections. Recently, our sheriff and police and even Dr. Kupicki said that if anyone observes or hears anything questionable concerning our school's safety, they shouldn't hesitate to report it. In fact, you could do so anonymously. Well, due to the expressed fear of parents having their child named on a complaint, I would advise the same policy for reporting books. The books themselves provide their own evidence, and a parent or child's testimony is not needed. If there are parents who want to supply their child with sexually explicit material, they can do so, but without my help and my tax dollars. And they will answer to God. We are charged with providing a sound education to children in North Carolina. This in no way obligates us to contribute to the delinquency of a minor which pornography classifies in this category. This is not about sound education. This is about using our children in a culture war. Let's take our children off the front line and protect them. Don't give in to the pressures of those who are endangering our children in pursuit of their political correctness and societal control. Thank you again for taking a stand for our children.
Thank you. Speaker number nine, Ellen Ivers.
Good evening. Hi, good evening. My name is Ellen Ivers, and I have two students enrolled in Cabarrus County with one more joining them in a couple of years. I'm here tonight to speak to the board about trust. I trust my children's teachers and their teachers' assistants. I trust my children's principal, I trust my children's librarians, I trust my children's bus driver, and I trust my children's guidance counselor. I don't have much trust in the board right now. To fully quote, not half-quote, I was done multiple times in last week's meeting, the letter that was sent to the board now signed by over 280 community members. I am not in favor of book bans, removals, or relocation under any circumstance because I trust the rigorous process by which books and other materials are initially brought into our schools by experts in the field of education. For two months, myself and other parents have been asking the school board to build trust and transparency into their book review process. There is already a process in place for parents to request alternative assignments for their children. While the board has told us they are listening to our concerns, I don't trust that that is happening. In last month's board meeting, the board chair reiterated the board is not here to ban books. Then sometime between Friday and Sunday evening this week, Policy 3211 draft was placed into the board agenda, which now the board is saying was never accurate and it should not have been posted. When books have quietly been removed with black and Native and LGBTQ characters without public comment, how can I trust this board? When the board is accepting ban requests from emails and text messages and not following the temporary, temporarily approved policy 3210, which you all voted on, how can I trust this board? If I can't trust this board on these issues, how can I trust them to solve actual problems in the system, like teacher vacancies, doubling up EC teacher loads, teacher morale, bus driver vacancies, addressing learning loss and safety in our schools? Books are, books that are reviewed should be reviewed by qualified professionals, not a politically active board. The board must be impartial. Books are tools for children to understand the world around them. Parents have a right to guide their children's reading, but a small group of parents should not be making decisions for other people's children. Removing books for some people's comfort is government censorship. Again, I'm asking for the 10 action items sent to the board on September 9th by hundreds of residents to be addressed prior to any policy approval so that trust can be instilled in this process. Our concerns are valid and not insignificant. Thank you.
Speaker number 10, Myra Frisch.
I'm hoping I said that correctly. Feel free to correct me. Hi, my name is Myra Frisch. My pronouns are she and her. I am a mom to three children currently enrolled at a Cabarrus County Elementary School. I was disheartened to learn last night that the board was considering a brand-new policy that, if passed, would circumvent all previously agreed-upon policies regarding books, throwing away the work of the Literacy and Supplemental Materials Committee in order to ban any book they like. Many members of this board are being transparent about their desire to ban books, but this is not the transparency that the public has asked for. I proudly signed both of the recent letters that came to this board from a group of parents regarding the potential for book banning to occur in our community. I signed my name because I am concerned that banning books will harm all our students, but in particular, our students of color, our non-Christian students, and our so-vulnerable LGBTQ community. As we all know, book banning is a popular national trend promoted by a vocal minority of politicians. Under the guise of parental rights, book bans are used primarily to remove materials that give voice to racially minoritized and LGBTQ people. In particular, texts that deal with the Black and Indigenous experiences in America are under attack. In the name of comfort for some of our students and some of our board members, we are at risk of creating a space that is hostile to marginalized groups and also to our teachers and media specialists. Our district had a longstanding policy in place to deal with parental concerns. That policy, as revised on August 8th, now allows for a parent with a directly impacted child to request that a book be removed only after that parent has read the book in full and filled out an extensive form. At the very least, I ask you to please follow the policies that you all agreed on. Last week, an elementary parent who was running for school board boasted on social media that he had complained directly to a current board member about a high school library book he had not read himself. So why was his voice treated with such deference? Yet the voices of hundreds of concerned parents like mine were treated like a nuisance, a waste of time, and were deemed too insignificant in number to be of value. I signed my name because I am concerned that the following books were removed or relocated in some capacity by someone last year. Hate You Give, Poet X, Perks of Being a Wallflower, Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, and Unwind. The public deserves to hear the truth about exactly what happened and when to these books. Thank you.
Speaker number 11, Alice Helms.
Good evening. Good evening. Changing it up, so forgive me if I'm wonky. My name is Alice Helms. I'm the parent of an elementary school student, a former English teacher, with my National Board certification and master's in secondary English education. I worked for 12 years, eight of which in Cabarrus County, and have now been home with my kids for four years. In this age of information, we need to be teaching our kids how to engage with difficult topics, not how to look away, not how to hide away. And if you, as a school board, decide that you, or any one person else, has the power to pluck books out of media collections, books which many of our students will relate to, then you are looking away from their problems. You are spending your time on abandoning them. You are saying, this does not matter here. We will not speak about this here. However, you have students sitting in those rooms who have experienced those things in those books. Do not abandon them. Leave in those books that make you uncomfortable. Do not abandon those children. Leave the decisions in the hands of the professionals who are trained to work with them, who work with them every single day, and who know which instructional materials are going to invigorate rigorous learning in our classrooms. A book can change a kid's life. And sometimes those books may have violence or sexual content. Shakespeare is full of it. But that content is functioning as a device of literature to illustrate a theme which I promise is worth the inclusion of your discomfort. Furthermore, instead of focusing on the hot-button issues that scream the loudest, this nonpartisan board's job and responsibility is to focus on issues that will improve learning outcomes for CCS students and prepare them for the future. The board's time is best spent on bigger-picture issues like transportation, class sizes, learning loss, and equity, teacher retention. These are the teachers and educators that are pouring their hearts and souls into our kids. Talking about specific books in school board meetings is a misuse of time. Instead of perpetuating these discussions of books, which create an environment of suspicion around teachers and media specialists and clearly distrust their professional expertise, let's lift them up and give them creative latitude they need to reach all children. Stop micromanaging a lesson plan or a library. Our educators have bachelor's, master's, doctoral degrees in education. They are with our kids every day, and they know that it is not their job to shy away from the problems our kids are facing. Policy 3211 and language like it undermines educators. Please do the work. Let the committee do its work while you focus on bigger issues. Thank you.
Speaker number 12, Courtney Steinberg.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Courtney Steinberg, and I have previously spoken to you as a parent of a future CCS student, and tonight I'm speaking to you as a parent of a kindergartner in Cabarrus County Schools. And I want to praise the teachers and staff at my child's school. Outside of working through a few pickup and drop-off issues, which we all know about, it's really been a great few weeks. My child is excited to get into school when we drop him off, and he is exhausted when we pick him up. Each day, he's able to share at least one thing he did that was exciting, even if it was just playing on the playground. Now, when I ask him to tell me what he learned that day, his response is usually, I don't know, why do you always ask me that? Because he's six. But I can tell he's already well into the learning process. He's reading more words every week, and he's learning a whole new language. While I know it takes an entirety of staff to help make our children successful learners, I want to focus tonight on our teachers, our media specialists, and our other certified staff. These amazing folks have put their time, money, energy, and passion into teaching our children. They've become absolute experts in how to engage children in active learning. I unequivocally trust them to know what tools they need to do their job. That's precisely why Policy 3211 is so disturbing to me. I appreciate the conversation you had tonight, but honestly, I have a hard time believing it would have occurred if parents hadn't voiced their concerns, and I believe this policy as originally presented would have been pushed through this board tonight. Giving the board power to decide what materials teachers can have to do their job is unacceptable. Not only is it not adding tools to the teacher's toolbox, it can be used to actively remove the tools they currently have, media that teachers have determined as experts in their field they need to help our children learn. As far as I'm aware, none of you hold any current certification to make such decisions. As a parent, I want the absolute best education for my child, and as board members, it's your legal requirement to continually work toward giving every child in Cabarrus County Public Schools access to a quality education. Public Schools access to a quality education. That's why I'm asking you not to pass Policy 3211. In closing, I want you to speak directly to teachers and certified staff. I hope you hear not just my voice, but the voice of many that were not able to be here tonight. We thank you. We trust you with our children every day. We trust you to teach them and care for them while they're at school, and we support you and board. If you agree, instead of removing tools from our teachers' toolbox and passing 3211, reach out to your friends in the General Assembly, which meets tomorrow, and ask them to fully fund the Leander decision so our teachers can have even more tools in their toolbox and our children can be successful learners. Thank you.
Speaker number 13, Andy Muller.
Hi, thank you. My name's Andy. I have an elementary-aged student in Cabarrus County Schools. We have over 270 vacant positions within Cabarrus County Schools, 270. I wanted to come here tonight as one of the parents which Ms. Adcock deemed to be so insignificant last week. Our letter and our opinions didn't matter, but one man running for school board with no children in our school district had the power to have all these books pulled and begin this mess. Removing books based on your own moral, political, or religious beliefs hurts children. All the children in our schools deserve to have characters they can relate to and find representation in. This includes racially and religiously minoritized people and members of the LGBTQ+Q community. These are not private religious schools. They're public. They are for everyone. Let our librarians and teachers do what they were educated, trained, certified, and licensed to do, and use the opt-out system that is already in place for controversial books. I'd like to read this quote by the great author Stephen King. "Book banners, after all, insist that the entire community should see things their way and only their way. When a book is banned, a whole set of thoughts is locked behind the assertion that there is only one valid set of values, one valid set of beliefs, one valid perception of the world." It's a scary idea, especially in a society which has been built on the ideas of free choice and free thought. Respectfully, this board is fully known with their political ambitions, and we're sick of it impacting our children in a partisan way. This isn't a place for political optics. This is for our children. I hope this board can find better ways to spend their time, maybe working on ways to fill some of these open positions, and worry less about what agenda bombs for liberty and the far-right want to push in our schools. By the way, there's zero copies of Looking for Alaska available in our public libraries. The fastest way to get a teen to read is to ban a book. So, good job.
Thank you. Speaker number 14, Daniel Helms.
Good evening, board. Many of the comments tonight have already spoken to the letter that was presented, so I'm going to let their word speak on that. But I do want to take a few moments to talk about the events of the last few months and why that letter is so important. Just a quick recap for the public that may not be aware. This board committed- created a committee to review policies in the midst of a political culture war under the belief that schools didn't have a process in place or were not following it, though many schools do have a policy, and it was stated tonight that we have had policies in the past. The committee members on the Literature Review Committee, many of whom are here in attendance tonight, were clear to state the request would come from parents challenging the materials on behalf of their students so that parents weren't allowed to remove material for all students. The policy was implemented using emergency authorization for the start of the school year until the policy passed a second read. This also happened at a time that text sets were removed from school by someone, though not the Literature Review Committee, and there were reports of displays or other materials being questioned in schools. So the transparency that has been thrown about all evening is about transparency moving forward. The letter asks for safeguards to be added to 3210 before adoption so that the community is aware of what materials are being challenged and why. It is to protect access to materials so that books that may offend only a few in the community are not pulled from circulation. The fears of these parents appear to be coming true, as the board has allowed a community member with no children in the schools where these books were to make a public challenge. Add in that a public statement was made to consider removing Scholastic as a vendor because of a student's book choice, and the quick introduction of Policy 3211, which allows the board to play a role in removing materials, and it's abundantly clear that transparency is still needed in this process. Tonight's discussion, my biggest takeaway is that it is still possible a community member at one area can take away access for the entire county. I want to thank the members of the Literature Review Committee for their diligent work in ensuring that the rights of our students and parents are considered in their review of Policy 3210. They have created a process that trusts the experts to make decisions regarding our materials. My concerns are not with their work, but with the manner and reasons behind the need for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 15, Pam Escobar.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Pam Escobar. I'm a mama bear with two daughters in Cabarrus County Schools. Congrats to the board for making headlines again. First, you insulted members of our community. Second, you insulted immigrants, and now you're insulting our intelligence. You are not making headlines for having the best schools. Stop playing on people's fears. I want to encourage anyone watching this, if you truly want what is best for kids, if you are embarrassed by the actions of this school board and how Cabarrus County is making headlines, vote. Vote for me, Pam Escobar. I will care for and represent everyone in this district. I will investigate your issues as my own. If you are a concerned parent about a book, I encourage you to speak to your student's teacher. This board spent months on a book policy, and parents are sharing with me emails that school board members don't respond to. Ignoring true issues doesn't make them disappear. Parents tell me they are worried about their kid's mental health after a gun scare at a football game. Safety in schools needs to be addressed. EC parents tell me they are worried about double caseloads for teachers. Will teachers be exhausted? This is a safety concern. There's a serious bus driver shortage combined with a brand-new middle school. There are very real safety concerns about students getting to school. There was a bomb threat today, and a high school was evacuated. This board needs to discuss safety at school board meetings. Thank you for the new SROs. Leadership is about shining a light on issues and the good. As board members, you can investigate true issues of safety, mental health, transportation, and teacher retention, and you can share the true good that happens every day in our schools. Inspire confidence that you believe in your teachers and staff. I'd like to shine a light on Cabarrus' new author, Emily Francis. She wrote If You Only Knew. She's a former 2016 Teacher of the Year. She came from Guatemala to the United States as a student, became a teacher assistant and a bus driver while getting her teacher degree. Her book should be required reading for the school board. Learn how kids learning English as a second language while working, missing their families, and navigating our schools are supported by an amazing woman who works at Concord High School. From page 115, If You Only Knew, I applied for my associate's degree, and at the same time, I applied to work within Cabarrus County Schools. That seed that has been planted in my heart when I was little was starting to sprout again. I'm sure you've heard the famous quote, "Quisieron enterrarnos pero no sabían que éramos semillas." They tried to bury us, but they didn't know we were seeds. Read the book. Show that you believe in our teachers and our schools. Cabarrus County Schools can be better than the headlines. My kid's education, every kid's education deserves better. It's about the kids.
Speaker number 17, Rachel Stanner.
Hello. Thank you to the board and also to everyone who came out in support of teachers and media coordinators. I myself am the media coordinator at Cox Mill Elementary School, and I will be speaking on the proposed policy 3211. I take issue with board policy 3211 from the very first sentence in which it states in part, "The board strives to provide media collections. The board does not meet with my students to find out what books they're interested in. I do. The board does not scour professional journals and websites to curate a list of books for students. I do. The board does not present a list of books I intend to purchase to my sit for review. I do. The board does not provide me with any funding or in any way help me raise money with which to purchase materials for my library. I do." All this to say, the board does not provide media collections. We, as the school library and media coordinators, who are all highly qualified to do our jobs and have the master's degrees to prove it, do. Moving down the policy, much of the language refers to the importance of library collections containing books rife with facts, information, and curriculum support, and the word "interest" is mentioned with one word in one guideline of the policy. This flies in the face of the American Library Association's Bill of Rights, which puts reader interest as the primary goal in book selection. Be that as it may, let's focus for a minute on the curriculum tie-ins that the board is so keen on endorsing with regard to the book that the board is so keen on banning, Looking for Alaska by John Green. If you are looking for curriculum tie-ins, consider the social-emotional themes in the book. It is a classic coming-of-age story in which characters struggle to define who they are. Characters must navigate interpersonal relationships and find one's place in a new environment. There are ethical dilemmas in which a character must decide if he should follow the crowd, and maybe most importantly, it explores the ways in which life can change in the blink of an eye and how one event can have a lasting emotional impact on a person, and the ramifications of the mental health implications brought upon by such life-altering events. And if that's not enough, here's a few other curriculum thoughts. In Cabarrus County Schools, Looking for Alaska is only in high school libraries. It is not in any middle schools. In 7th and 8th grade Healthful Living classes, the curriculum includes standards discussing sex in all its forms, including the consequences of engaging in such actions. Therefore, in this county, by the time students have access to Looking for Alaska in their school library, they will already have been exposed to everything on those controversial pages by way of their middle school health classes. Further down the policy, it describes a desire to select material of the highest quality, and again, I'd like to reference Looking for Alaska, which has recently been referred to as crap by one member of this board. It earned star reviews from five of the eight most respected book media journals, and it received the 2006 Michael L. Prinz Award, the highest honor that can be given to a young adult book. And if that's the kind of crap that is in our school libraries, I think we're doing all right. So I ask you to not concern yourselves with determining what goes in our school libraries because that is our job. Please let us do it. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Kirby Bullard.
Good evening. You can tell I'm not a parent of a current student. My three kids are 30, 33, and 35, but they are all- two of them are graduates of Cabarrus County Schools. So we've lived here about 28 years. I am a daughter of a college librarian, so you can imagine that books and reading are really important to me. And I feel really strongly that I should live in a place, continue to live in a place, where books aren't banned. I think these folks that, you know, want to get these- those books out of the schools think that it's going to protect the kids. But unfortunately, we live in an age, an internet age, where children are hyper-sexualized, where child sex abuse is rampant, child pornography is readily available, and banning books with sexual content is not going to solve those problems. It's the adults that are doing that stuff to the kids, not books. All you're doing with that, with what, talking about banning books, committees, whatever, you're stepping onto a slippery slope. My biggest beef, though, is that in my opinion, you guys are overstepping your bounds. As far as I know, none of you are educators or media specialists or librarians, as my mom was. I think we have incredible teachers and media specialists that are professional and sensitive, and frankly, I see it as a slap in their face to them that the school board is meddling in this at all. Don't be the school board that acts like this. Checked out the book Maus, or M-A-U-S, it's a German word, when I read about the school board in Texas that banned that. It's a graphic novel about the Holocaust. It's the craziest thing that that book was banned. If you're doing this for political reasons, I say shame on you. As a school board, do the job you're elected to do. My goodness, there's so much work you guys have to do. We live in a democracy, but it is a slippery slope when you start banning books. I watched part one of Ken Burns', The U.S. and the Holocaust. It started last night. It's on PBS. I'm sure you can catch up. It was just part one. But it showed the Germans burning books because they did not like what was in them. Where does that stop? Once you start banning, how far are you from burning? Let the professionals at each school make a decision about the books that should be available for children to read. You guys have plenty of work to do. We need all of you doing your job to provide the best educational system we can and to keep Cabarrus County's reputation as a strong school system that supports and respects its professionals and provides a sound education for its children. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our speakers for the night. I'm going to give you an opportunity, for those of you that would like to exit the room, that you can do so now. And board members, we are going to move on to reports, which is at 8.01. I'm going to begin with committee reports, and I will begin with Ms. Sandage. Anything from you?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Walter?
I don't have anything either.
Mr. Farrar?
No.
Ms. Blackwell?
So I just want to remind everyone that we do have our Literature and Supplemental Material Committee meeting. It will be here tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, and we do welcome guests to come and unfortunately not able to participate in the meeting. We do have about 25 members of this committee, and we will be discussing all of the things that we spoke about tonight, so I just wanted to make that clear, that we will be talking about all of this stuff tomorrow evening.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. We will move to 9.02, knowing that we moved 9.01 to 4.04. So 9.02, which is our Cabarrus County School Spotlight on Educators, and we will have our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Angie McLean.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Kopecky, and my board family. I would like to continue with the tradition of spotlighting the amazing learning, collaboration, and community involvement that is happening in our county. Ashton Berry, our Southwest Regional Teacher of the Year, started something brilliant, and I would like to continue to carry this torch. Tonight, I would like to spotlight the Summer Bridge Academy. Next slide, please. Exposure is going to be a key word throughout my presentation. This Summer Bridge Academy was- has provided several of the current kindergarten students across the county with exposure to early curriculum resources, their community, and a time to build on social and emotional skills. The Summer Bridge Academy was a three-week half-day academy for rising kindergarten students across the county. The academy focused on exposing rising kindergarten students curriculum-based materials such as Letterland, I Ready Math, I Ready Reading, Letter Sounds, early literacy skills, STEM, restorative circles, and an opportunity to build peer and teacher relationships. This slide captures a few examples, on my next one. Thank you so much. This slide captures a few examples of some community involvement that the students received during the three-week academy. Students were able to learn about fire safety and explore their community and visit their local library. The next 11 slides, and you're welcome to kind of just scroll through them, will provide the opportunity to see the excitement, the energy, and the exposure that students across the county receive through the leadership and support of several passionate and dedicated educators. So this is just some footage from different schools that they sent in of just our babies learning and being prepared for the new school year. So this is just some footage from different schools that they sent in of just our babies learning and being prepared for the new school year. So the Summer Bridge Academy had an impact on more than just the students. Several of the schools in our county received letters from parents acknowledging the value of the academy and commending our schools for the exposure it provided to their children and their peers. Mrs. Franklin, a kindergarten, she is now, a kindergarten parent at Arbrown McAllister stated that her son looked forward to camp every day. He even hoped she got stuck in traffic so that she would be late picking him up. She also stated that she was a hundred, she believed a hundred percent that this experience will support his transition to kindergarten, and she felt that she made the right decision to have him attend the STEM program at Arbrown McAllister. Next slide, please. Mrs. Hogan, a kindergarten parent at Beverly Hills STEM Elementary, stated that Joan loved Summer Bridge Camp. She came home every day telling me about the fun learning experiences she had. She would come home and want to show me letters and numbers that she learned at bridge. I have never seen my child so eager to go to school every day. Next slide, now please. Thank you. Administration and teachers also had a high regards to the early exposure to student, that the students received. Dr. Davis, Principal at WM Irvin Elementary, stated that kindergarten Summer Bridge Camp was a great opportunity for students to be exposed to our school in a relaxed atmosphere. They loved it, and they were learning too. Dr. Davis also stated that he believes students who participate, participated will have a great start to their kindergarten year. Next slide. Finally, I wanted to highlight the perspective of a teacher who participated during the Summer Bridge Academy. Mrs. Yarborough from Mount Pleasant Elementary stated that she felt the program was a great opportunity for students to get a sneak peek at what school is all about. She found the program extremely beneficial to help gain insight on the needs of the students. She also hopes to see a camp like this hosted for rising kindergarten students with more sessions, which could increase participation. Exposure is what prepares us all for every avenue of our lives, and kindergarten is no different. My final slide, that I like to call it, next steps, data tracking. I really want, as a kindergarten teacher who also taught during this Summer Bridge Camp, I wholeheartedly agree that we need to continue to offer students access to instruction as soon as we can, especially coming out of a pandemic. I look forward to continuing with my students this year and however, taking a really close eye to the friends who attended this Summer Bridge Camp and collecting data so that we can kind of see what the effects of having this early exposure is in relation to maybe not having it. And then also looking at avenues in the future for other kindergarten readiness programs like Summer Bridge. Thank you so much for allowing me to share this information and shining a light on our kindergarten and elementary schools.
That was great. Thank you, Ms. McLean. Okay, board members, we will move to items under ten point zero one, which is our consent agenda. May I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented? I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We will move to our action agenda, starting with eleven point zero one, the 2023-2024 Academic Calendars. We will have Mrs. Sue Burns back to the podium. I think we've had quite a bit of discussion regarding this proposal. Board members, any more comments or questions? And Ms. Burns, have you had any questions?
I received one phone call from a parent just asking about starting school on a different date, but that was, that was all I received.
Okay. I'm going to begin with Ms. Sandage.
I'm good to go here.
Okay. Mr. Walter?
So we are, it's okay if we vote on these early starts, that, but the goal here is that's legal, it's legal to do.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions.
Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I'm going to thank everybody that worked on it, and I think I've received one for and one against, but hopefully, we're going to work with everybody. It's going to be adjustment for our teachers and probably for our children, but I think the biggest thing is to get these exams over before the break. I know that some of the board members have been on, I know, Tim and some of them as long as I have, and that has been one of our biggest concerns. So I think we ought to give it a shot, but again, I think we ought to be sure we work with some of our teachers because they've been used to having that longer summer break, so let's keep that in mind.
Ms. Adcock?
No question.
Board members, may I have a motion that the 2023-2024 Academic Calendar be approved as presented? So move. Yes.
I just want to make certain that the board is clear about their vote, and is it going to be the traditional academic calendar or the early start calendar?
Board members, on the floor, I'll place the early start calendar.
Yeah.
Just for clarification. I thought that's where we were starting.
That's what I thought so, but I want to make certain that the vote is clear.
To clarify for the viewing audience, so it is the early start calendar that we are discussing, which you actually may comment to. So again, I will ask that the 2023-2024 Academic Calendar, early start calendar, be approved as presented. So move. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so now you have to approve the early college one and the.
Yes, so we also have the early college calendar and the Wolf Meadow calendars.
So.
I'll make that motion to approve those as presented.
Do we need to do them separately, Jay, or can we do them?
We can do them together.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Walter, will you restate your motion, please?
Yeah, make a motion to present the Wolf Meadow Academic Calendar and the Early College Academic Calendar as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
I think that takes care of you. Thank you.
One question. Chair, one question. Since we did do the early calendar, which is different, do we have to do any kind of letter? Because I know there was some, and this may be a legal question. I know there was some talk since that is not what the state had recommended. Do we have to do some type of letter with it since it is different than what the state had recommended? Do we have to do any kind of letter?
We just have to present it to the state. That's what we will be doing, and it will be done by our board attorney.
And it needs to be done by April the first of next year, so you're well in advance.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Thank you.
So eleven point zero two, the RFP for the district realignment. Dr. Kopecky? Any comments or questions by board members? Have you had any comments or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have not, other than what we discussed last week, and again, this is just to begin the process to move forward to a district realignment.
Okay. So board members, any comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any.
Ms. Carpenter?
Basically, this is just to put out a proposal.
It's for him to start the process.
Just to start the process.
Right.
Right. I would come back and let the board know when that process is done to put it out, which I anticipate to be next, in October.
Ms. Blackwell?
No question.
Mr. Furr?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
So you're going to give us a copy of the RFP when it's finished, or is that the next step?
That's correct, sir.
Ms. Sandage?
I just want to make sure this is to explore options for the process. I just want to make sure we're not, what, what, just can we clarify what we're doing here?
Sure. I'm going to come back to the board in October with a request for proposal to do a district realignment with all the requirements they're asking our vendors to bid on and look at. At that point in time, if the board is, is that pleased with it, we'll put it out to bid. Let it, we'll put off for the appropriate time. When it comes back, I'll bring it back to the, I'll bring vendors back to the board to present, and the board will choose one to go full-forward. But in October, what I'm going to do is bring back the RFP, just have your input and your review on it to say, did we get everything? Did we bring everything that we should through this RFP, and you get board input as to what may or may not be included. Sure.
Ms. Sandage, is that good?
I'm good with that.
Mr. Walter?
So we have to do a realignment anyway when we open an elementary school, is that correct? Is this going to incorporate that, or are we getting, needing a separate one for that?
Great question. This is going to incorporate everything. The timing, if at all, the goal here is to implement any realignment for the 2024-2025 school year when Arbrown McAllister is ready to open at the elementary level. So we'll include that school, and so I'm, I'm talking all forty-four schools, we're going to take a hard look at, and I'll bring that information to the board in October.
Okay. May I have a motion that the Cabarrus County School Superintendent, Dr. John Kopecky, receive board approval to start the process for a request for proposal related to district realignment as presented? So move. I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving to eleven point zero three, the initial budget resolution for adoption for 2022-2023. We'll have Mrs. Carol Herndon back to the podium. Good evening.
Ben was trying to jump in front of me.
Ahead of you. He should have.
You can do the budget if you want. Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunities you officially bring for the initial budget resolution for 2022-2023. Let's start with that, not the ESR update, if we could. Thank you. Get that up for just a second. Okay, so not the comparison, the one right on the bottom left. There you go. Thank you. There you go. Just let me explain. I know that I shared this at a high level last week, but let me share the construct of the new format. Across the top of the budget resolution, you'll see the different funds that we maintain. So our state fund, local fund, capital outlay, federal fund, school nutrition, Kids Plus. All the funds that we talk about over the course of the year are listed across the front, and the first section summarizes the expenditures that we are budgeting for the school year, and the section two represents the revenues that we are budgeting for the school year. And it is a balanced budget as it's required to be. Expenditures are equal to revenues, and again, this is information, the exact information that the board has received previously, just in a different format to make it more of a snapshot, easy to read, easy to understand, all the components of our initial budget resolution on one page. So a couple of highlights. The total budget that I'm sharing with you is right at four hundred and sixty-six point two million dollars. And remember, you might recall, we were at a little over a half a billion last year, and the reason this is lower is that this is our initial budget resolution. We will continue to get funding across the school year from the state as allotments come to us at various times across the school year. We also receive some of our capital outlay funding from our county across the school year as well. So we will bring amendments to the budget as this changes across the school year so that you can see how our budget transitions between now and the end of June 2023. But four hundred and sixty-six point two million dollars, and you'll notice, and we talked about this briefly last week, about fifty-one percent of our budget relates to state funding. And if you look at local and you combine operating expense plus capital outlay, that's thirty-five percent, and then about thirteen percent from the federal government. So those are the biggest pieces of our budget. That's pretty similar to the previous year. We'll look at a comparison in just a moment. But our federal funding is dropping a bit because we aren't seeing as many new ESR funding buckets. Most of those have already been allotted, and we're all, well on our way to the spending plans that we've shared with the board previously. The good news, and I'm always proud of this, if you look at the first line under section one, the instructional services expenditure line, we spend sixty-two percent of our budget serving our students directly through instruction and all of our instructional support. And we need to be proud of that. That's what's expected of us. That's what we do in this business, and I'm proud to say that this budget is no different than what we've shared in the past in that regard.
Carol, can I interrupt you for just a moment? Just for the viewing audience, could you tell us what's incorporated into instructional services?
So it's, it's teacher salaries and benefits, any type of curriculum materials that we use. A lot of our technology is included, anything that's directly in front of our students from an instructional perspective. So people and things. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
As I mentioned last week, I do feel strongly that this budget is appropriately conservative at this point in the school year because the economic climate around us is still incredibly uncertain. We don't know what will happen from an inflationary perspective, although gas prices are down a bit and diesel prices are down a bit from where we ended last school year. They're still way ahead of where they were this time last year, and so we're glad that the trend has shifted a bit, but we are uncertain about what might be in front of us. And while our state has said out loud that they will help us navigate fuel price increases that we might experience, we don't know what that might look like until we get there. So I do believe this is an appropriately conservative budget and one that we will navigate against as circumstances might change in our economy. We talked a little bit last week, and we, we had some honest conversation about our local fund balance appropriation that is working in this budget right at five million dollars, which leaves us with about five million dollars in our fund balance at the end of this school year, if in fact, that appropriation materializes across the year. I did some digging into our local budget just to get my arms around any choices that might be readily available for us to consider in adjusting this budget if the board is interested in doing that. And it's, it's tough to do that at this point in the school year because about fifty-two percent of our local budget is to fund salaries and benefits, and those are not decisions that we are prepared to make. We are looking to bring resources into our schools and to fill vacant teaching positions so that we have our best instructional foot in front of our students. And so that leaves a smaller portion of non-salary and benefit expenditures to look at as it relates to choices. And after looking back through all the line items and back through all the provisions that have been funded by this initial budget resolution, I can't find any low-hanging fruit, and I hope that the board trusts that if it were there, we would have already thought through that and made adjustments and included those types of cost-cutting considerations in this initial budget resolution before I'm sharing it with you. We can always do some type of budget holdback and say to our budget owners, you can spend ninety-five percent of your budget until we feel more comfortable about the way things will play out across the school year. But I do feel strongly that lots of input went into building this budget. Lots of experts provided their thinking and their best guess at what it was going to take to support all of the programs and initiatives that we have at Cabarrus County Schools, which yields the results that Carl shared with us earlier this evening. And that's an option, so I felt like I needed to bring it up. I don't know that it's the right thing to do, but it's certainly something that we could consider as we think about this budget. What I'm most excited about and what I'm accountable to you for most of all, and where I think we have real opportunities, is as we put the finishing touches on our strategic plan that Dr. Kopecky briefly shared earlier tonight, it gives us a real filter to run our budgeting decisions through, and so that we're laser-focused on the areas that we have aligned around to best serve our students. And so instead of thinking we'll try this, or maybe we'll take a look at that, our strategic plan should be the guideline and the filter through which we make our budget decisions. So I'm super excited to have that as a tool as we refine this budget across the year and then, more importantly, start thinking about how to build our budget for 2023, 2024. Also, I don't think it was a coincidence, but Rodney Harris at the county reached out to me on Tuesday or Wednesday of last week and said, let's have lunch and start to talk about your budget and your budget needs. And I just thought that was so kind and so in the spirit of partnership that he already wanted to make sure that the two of us were aligned around what was on the horizon for Cabarrus County Schools, what has happened as we've navigated through the conversations around using our ESR funds and using our fund balance to make sure that we. around using our ESER funds and using our fund balance to make sure that we met our needs and their commitments that they've shared through their recent budget recommendation that they were gonna make us whole in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. So Rodney and a couple of folks on his budget staff and myself are gonna have lunch on Friday. I jumped at the chance to have that opportunity and that time with them. And I just was very encouraged and validated what I already felt from the county, and that is to really partner with each other to figure out how to best fund the needs for our students. So I'm not worried about that at all. I think it's a new day for a new story and new conversations. And the fact that he reached out to me to start talking about this in September versus December or January, February is a great sign that our county is going to step up and be partners with us and hear our story and hear about the funding needs that we have for our students. So I'm super excited about that. Also, real honored to be a part of our continued work around staff allotments and understanding what levels of staffing we need to support and execute all of the programs and services that we provide to our students. That is a collaborative effort that involves myself, Dr. Bish, all of our assistant superintendents, the folks that are closest to what we're doing in our schools and making sure that we optimize staffing at school level. And I know that you all are aware and that Dr. Withers has shared already a couple of times the approach we're taking to that. It is grounded in math, if you will, but we talk a lot about the math and we make decisions based on what is best for our students. We just let the math open up the conversation. And so we're gonna continue to refine that. We've learned a lot by going through that. For the first time with our principals, we had incredible one-on-one conversations with each principal to explain our approach around allotments, and we're gonna continue to refine that. And I think we've built some trust with our school leaders. We've been watching enrollment across the summer. We started in July. We made some tweaks. We looked at it again in August. We made some tweaks. We made some decisions based on day-ten enrollment. Dr. Kapiki quoted today's enrollment numbers. And so we continue to look at the number of children that we're serving and we have conversations ongoing with our principals to make sure that we are optimizing staffing at the school level. And so there are a lot of really innovative and collaborative efforts underway and getting a lot of traction in our district that are gonna help us to continue to refine our budgeting process and to have our board have confidence that we are going to be funded for success, not only this school year, but in future school years as well. So let me share with you, just in case it was posted to Board Docs, if you'll put up the first changes sheet, so the comparison top, there you go, right there. This is a comparison the board is used to receiving. It's not incredibly meaningful at this point in the process because it compares our initial budget resolution to our final budget amendment last year. And they're just not very comparable because we know we have funding streams that will continue to come to our district across the year. But nonetheless, this is a comparison of expenditures. So you've got expenditures that are working in this budget resolution, expenditures for last year at the end of the year, and then the difference, and then a similar schedule for revenues. And so the only thing that's really worth noting, I already mentioned, and that is, if you'll go to the second page, if you don't mind, you'll see at the bottom, under the federal grants three column, we are currently budgeting federal revenues to be almost twenty-two million dollars less than they were in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And that is because we are not seeing new large ESER funding opportunities for our district or any district in the state of North Carolina. We're still getting some, but they're smaller dollar amounts for the most part. That's really it. If you compare this initial budget resolution to last year's final budget amendment, that's really the only thing that popped out as something that was unusual, although understandable for me. So I'll pause there. I do wanna talk about ESER for just a bit and share with the board what I've learned as I've been digging into our ESER funding in the large buckets. This is ready for your approval. When you're ready, as I mentioned last week, we can make this a three-week conversation and talk about it again next week. I want the board to feel comfortable with this initial budget resolution and certainly allow for any questions you might have.
Board members, comments or questions? I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
So you were talking about, well, first off, thank you for all of the work that you've done. The new form is very simplified and user-friendly, so I appreciate that. But you were talking about low-hanging fruit, and it made me think about a question that I may have already asked before. So, and I'm not a CPA, so I, okay. So when I think about, when you said low-hanging fruit, it made me think about, okay, so there is lots of positions open. So those salaries aren't being used. Is there some leeway or what are we doing with that? What happens to that unused salary? Can you help me understand that?
Yes, well, most of it we're using to compensate folks that are stepping up to cover classes or additional duties that aren't being tended to because of those vacant positions. And Marion and I talked last week about the process that we've developed, and we have a very detailed process to make sure we understand coverage gaps and that we justify the need to have someone take on additional responsibilities, to be sure that classrooms are managed and that our children are instructed and that they get the education that they deserve. But it's not, we're using the budget from that vacant position to fund those coverage efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
I guess that sparked your questions. How do we differentiate between a state-funded position and a locally-funded position?
Well, we, the strategy is that we try to fund our most expensive resources through our state allotments because they allot based on positions and months, not dollars. And so if we move our most expensive resources to state funding, we'll get more bang for our buck, if that makes sense.
Like the vacancies type of thing?
Oh, for vacancies?
Well, same, I guess that's similar.
Well, yeah, we know who is funded by each of our funding source. We know, we have a budget code for each.
You would fill the state-funded positions first and then, or you can't do that?
We just, we'd be constantly optimizing the way we fund our staff. So yes, but we don't really look at it as we're filling those positions. We look at it holistically. If we've been allotted, I think it's fifteen hundred fifty classroom teachers, we work hard to fund our most expensive resources through that state allotment so that that dollar is maximized.
Okay, I see that for funding it, but for the vacancies, I don't know if you can do the same.
We don't really discern between the vacancies.
Because that would save us some local dollars, anyway. I don't, my concern is still the same from last week is the fund balance. And then, you know, although we can talk to the county all we want to, it's ultimately a vote by the county commissioners on what we're gonna get. And we're taking a big risk by taking five million dollars out of fund balance for recurring expense, or a lot of that's recurring expense. And then we have a policy that, you know, the eighty-five thirty, the one that talks about what the fund balance, it's supposed to be one month of operating expenses. If something tragic happens and we've gotta come up with some, we're gonna have our hands tied and we're gonna have to beg the county to help us find solutions if there's a natural disaster that takes out a school or something. So it's critical that we have a fund balance for those emergencies and not tie it up into some recurring expense. That's really my big, my big holdup with it. I know it's all a partnership. I know, you know, we can't really do anything without the county on our local positions, and they go above and beyond to help with our supplements, and they go above and beyond to give us more teachers than the state would allocate. And that's a really good thing for our county that other counties don't actually have. So that is, that's a big thing, and I think that partnership is really, really important. But again, we gotta be doing it, even if you think you're gonna make yourself whole two years from now, you really don't know what it looks like two years from now. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. I mean, we don't know, but I know that it's my responsibility to tell our story. And the main reason we are up against this challenge from a fund balance perspective is because our county saw all the monies that were coming to our district from an ESER funding perspective, and they saw a very growing fund balance and said, "We're gonna redirect the money that we would normally give you to fund ongoing expenditures for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to capital, and we'll be back to talk about and get you that money, you know, later." And so we're counting on that, to your point. Do we know it will happen? Of course, we don't know it will happen, but it's my job to tell our story. And you can count on that, and I feel better equipped to tell our story now than I did when I first came on board in January. I feel like our county has gracious, open ears, and I'll be fighting for every student in our district in every conversation that we have, and I feel like they will be too. But can I promise that that number will start to grow again? Of course, I can't promise that, but I know how to tell the story now.
And that's important, but do we wanna hold some money back just in case, or does that make sense? I mean, it's not easy to do, obviously.
No, it's very hard. Tough choices will have to be made, particularly if inflation continues, you know, then your cuts are even deeper, right? Because we can't, we have to cover inflation, whether it's utilities.
Or you take more out of the fund, I mean, that's
Yes, sir.
It's a big concern about the child nutrition fund and all that shortfall that'll be there. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just to your point, and I just wanna make this one comment before I move on, we do have a great relationship, and they are very, very amenable to discussions and what needs to be done. And they're also charged by the state of North Carolina Fund Education.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not like they can, you know, detour from that position. Mr. Farr?
Yeah, no, I was gonna, the only thing I really got to say is, you know, I've been down here, I guess, on the board around ten years. We've never, the county's always helped us. Whatever our needs are, that's not gonna change. And you can tell Rob's not a business owner because he would feel a little differently if he was. But anyway, I got all the confidence in the world, and I think, I don't think we need to bring her down here another week or whatever. It is what it is, so thanks.
Ms. Blackwell.
So I will just echo that same comment. Thank you for all of the hard work that you have been putting into this. You have literally put your soul into all of this and learning our story and presenting that to the county. I have no doubt that you will do that respectfully and excellently. So again, thank you for all of your hard work. We really appreciate it, truly. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
And I agree, and we're gonna go over the ESER one also, or you go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, only other question, and have we got any kind of charter numbers at all?
Yeah, we budgeted a twelve percent increase in charter school students, and that was really just an average of what we've experienced over the last five years. We tried to pick a timeframe that was beyond COVID. So that's a bit of a guess. I will tell you that our charter school enrollment has decreased a bit for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two than what we expected, so that's good. And our county fully funded our twelve percent increase projection for ADM, so they gave us that money to pass through to charter schools. So unless we see charter school enrollment growth higher than twelve percent, which we haven't seen in recent years, we should be fully funded from that perspective.
But, I mean, you haven't got any kind of numbers right now of what we?
We have not, we have not received any invoice, I don't think we've received any invoices yet from charters. Usually we get them mid to late September, October, as their enrollment settles at the beginning of the year.
Okay, but you said you've put it right at twelve and you think
Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna be right. What did you say, I know you, he had mentioned it early, what is it right now, I mean, our total enrollment right now?
Thirty-four thousand seven seventeen-ish.
And that's about what we, what did we turn into the state?
Well, they allotted us initially for this school year at thirty-four six four two, so we're actually above that.
Yay!
Yeah.
I knew we were right on it. We were, you know, right, right at it. I knew last time, I mean, we were
We were close, now we're even better, better every day.
Which I'm glad to hear that. But again, thank you for everything you've done. And again, I know, we only have the two enterprise funds, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is the kids plus and the other. And that's the only thing that really concerns me because if we ran into problems, which we know nutrition, we know we got a problem with that. And that's where my concern really is, so that's it. But thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
I don't really have any questions. Thank you for all of your work on getting this done, and I'm just gonna have to agree with what some other board members have said about, you know, the fund balance is there for us to use when we need it, and we are just gonna have to hope for the best going forward. So thank you.
So you have the ESER fund?
Yep, so now we'll switch to Asher. Thank you. You already got it up now? Bottom, there you go. Great, thank you. All right. All right, we'll just go to the next slide. So I'm focusing on our large ESER buckets, ESER one, two, and three, and there are a host of smaller ESER funding opportunities that we've taken advantage of over the past couple of years. But I wanted to focus on the three big ones and just remind the board that we don't just get this money by chance. There's an application process. It's pretty extensive where each local education unit is required to develop a spending plan, and that spending plan is based on an identified need in the district, and then we have to build a budget to support that plan. And we submit that to DPI, and they approve the plan and the budget on behalf of the federal government. And any changes that we might make to that plan have to be submitted as an amendment. You can't just change it because circumstances evolved or you changed your mind. You have to go back and get permission from DPI to modify the initial plan and the initial budget. The DPI folks continue to say loudly that the spending has to be aligned with the three-pronged test and connected to COVID. I thought that might migrate a bit, but we are preparing for our upcoming monitoring visit that I mentioned last week, which will be on October twentieth. We have a specific date now. And they bring up this three-pronged test every time that we talk about preparation for the monitoring visit. So prevention of, response to, or as a result of COVID remain the funding requirements. Next slide, please, thank you. So I am gonna focus on ESER three, which is on the far right side of this chart, because we have already spent all of our ESER one money. That was the first bucket that came to districts across our state in May of twenty twenty. And we have just about finished our spending plan for ESER two. And so there's not a whole lot to say with regard to ESER one and ESER two that we have not already discussed. And we are pretty much past the point of return with regard to making any changes in our spending plan. For ESER three, at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the end of our most recent fiscal year, we had a balance of seventeen-point-seven million dollars still available to spend in our ESER three funding bucket. And those funds expire on September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. So we'll talk a little bit about what we are currently funding in ESER three and how that looks right now. So next slide. Just a reminder, and I won't reread this because I've already shared this exact slide with the board, when I first started exploring our ESER funding, these are the commitments that we made and the board-approved plan from an ESER three spending perspective. This first page is all about incremental resources, teachers and SISP, psychologists, social workers, counselors, ESL resources, EC resources that we brought into our district to help address and identify, identify and address learning loss opportunities for our students. Next slide. Next slide. Some additional positions that we funded with our ESER 3 money to, again, either enhance the instructional experience in our schools, to support additional cleaning through the hiring of additional custodians, to make sure that our schools were safe and healthy for our students and staff. Some additional positions here. The next slide. We were required by law to set aside 20% of the allotment, the ESER 3 allotment, to be fully dedicated to learning loss. You just saw a great example of that through some of our summer programs and to make sure that students stayed motivated and were learning across the summer months. So, that is just a calculation, a sheer calculation. 20% of the money that we were allotted had to be set aside for instruction and the addressing of learning loss. And so, all of that adds up to our allotment of just under $30 million that we received for ESER 3. And on the next slide, all of those positions that I just reviewed at a very high level that we've discussed previously, our initial positions that we planned totaled 98.5. And over the course of our journey and looking at gaps in learning and making sure that we were setting our students up for success despite the challenges of the pandemic, that really extended into last school year, to be honest with you. We had also funded additional positions beyond the 98.5, and we were allowed to do that. The way we wrote our plan allowed us to be very fluid in identifying needs and addressing those needs in front of our students. So, at one point, we had over 176 positions that were funded through ESER 3. Right now, we're at 146, and we need that number to be going down because while September 30th, 2024 seems like a far-away space, it truly isn't. And I know that when this original plan and budget was presented to the board, we were pretty crystal clear that we planned to navigate off the funding cliff and to ease out of using these ESER funding buckets by the growth and the need for more resources and attrition. And so, I feel comfortable that at the $17.8 million that we had as we started this school year, we have enough money to fund those 146 positions for a good, probably, I said one and a half here, it's probably a bit longer than that, but we're already having conversations. Marion and I are partners in this, we talk about it on a daily basis, to make sure that we understand how we're going to unravel this funding in time to be prepared for that September 30th, 2024 end date. So, I'm encouraged that we're at 146. That's the right direction and trajectory that you would want to see around these positions. I do believe that some of the reason that you saw the good information that Carl shared early is because we have really dedicated human resources to our efforts in our schools, and we are going to really let this work inform our allotment conversations in a very planful fashion as we start to do that work in the early spring next year. So, the good news is, I feel comfortable about what we are funding and what we are not funding. We are moving in the right direction. Marion and I are partners and joined at the hip to make sure we leverage growth and attrition to address this funding cliff that will be in front of us so that we can all feel comfortable that it'll be a smooth transition and not a clunky one. And we'll keep you apprised of that along the way, but that's where we are, and I probably know way more about it than I ever thought I would, but I needed to understand what we did and why we did it and how it's migrating, and just blessed to have Marion alongside to make sure that we are prudent and planful in making sure this all rolls off in a way that is not disruptive to our district. And I think that's it for us, sir.
Okay, board members, any comments? Yeah, comments or questions regarding the ESER? Ms. Sandage.
I don't have any questions. Thank you again for the presentation, and just thank you for all of your work.
Mr. Walter.
I think you covered, and you showed us the issues, and obviously, it's a concern, but we're working on it, we're working through this.
Mr. Farr.
No questions.
Ms. Blackwell.
No question.
Ms. Carpenter.
No questions.
Ms. Adcock.
No question.
Okay, so all of the budget resolutions have been presented, are the items, so may I have a motion that we adopt the initial budget resolution for 2022, 2023? So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Mr. Farr. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move to 11.04, the approval of the E-Rate purchase requisition. We'll have Mr. Ben Alred to the podium. Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
This is more of a contract situation, so this is why we did it.
That's correct.
Any comments or questions tonight? May I have a motion that the E-Rate purchase requisition be approved as presented?
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Mr. Walter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We'll move to 11.05, soft-choice annual contract for Microsoft Office. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion that the soft-choice annual contract for Microsoft Office be approved as presented? So, move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. We will move to 11.06, the Apple replacement cycle purchase. Any comments or questions?
I did have one question and one clarification, and I wish Art Whitaker was here. I always reference transportation. So, the question came up is, what about when the device that we provide a teacher doesn't suffice for a program, like literally a software program, a program like an academy? Or, you know, Ms. Carol Herndon, she has to run a PC in order to access her financial software. So, the answer to that is, just like with buses, we provide yellow buses for every student that wants bus transportation, but there are certain students that necessitate specific types of transportation, and we accommodate those students. We do the same thing. We buy the lion's share of our devices that necessitate the required work that teachers do. When the device that we provide doesn't meet those needs, we work with staff, teachers, or individual departments to make sure they have what they need. But 95%, 98% of our staff can do the work that they need with the device that they provide. So, I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Okay, so, board members, I'm not sure who asked that, was that an answer? You did.
The high-tech board member did it.
The high-tech board member did, okay. We'll take that.
So, you're going to take care of the teachers that they need that device because we want to make sure that teachers have the device they need for their children?
Yeah, we'll work with the individual schools, academies, principals, teachers, to make sure that we have the device that fits the needs for the work that they need to do.
Okay, thank you.
That's because we have the freedom for the buyback program.
Mr. Farr had told me about that, and I wanted to make sure that they did have that.
Okay, all right.
Could you repeat that question, Rob?
Mr. Walter.
And that's because we have freedom with the buyback, those funds we can use for, we're not, we don't have to buy an Apple product with the funds that we're returning out of.
No, we don't. It's not unusual for us to buy, you know, you, we work through these to buy, again, the lion's share of our devices, but we work every single day to meet the needs of staff within our budget. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter and a second by Ms. Blackwell to approve the Apple replacement cycle purchase. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move to 11.07, but I'm going to actually pass that one on, as we discussed in earlier comments, to the Literacy and Supplemental, yes, committee. Is there anything else that you would like to add at this point in time? Any more discussion surrounding this policy, or let's just move it to their meeting tomorrow night for further discussion? Is that good? Okay. That item will be moved to the Literature and Supplemental Materials Committee. So, that concludes all of our business for this meeting, and I would ask that the board, we have a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6.
Make the motion.
A motion by Ms. Carpenter and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, I did good.
And with that, guys, let me get, let's get off camera. So, with that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and we will see you for our October work session. Thank you and goodnight.